Good evening. I'd like to call and order the work session of the Morseville Town Council. The time is now 6:30 PM, and the date is October 17th, 2017. I'm going to turn it over to Benjamin Howell to give us an overview of tonight's agenda.
All right, good evening. So, just to give you a quick update on the, both the public comments and how we're accepting public comments on the plan, on the draft plan, as well as the schedule. So, as we had mentioned at the, I believe at the previous work session, we are collecting comments from the Planning and Zoning Board from you, as well as the public, and we're collecting public comments through the portal on our website. And we are compiling those comments and giving, and getting them back to both the Planning and Zoning Board and you as your meetings come up. So, tonight you had comments in your packet that were through midnight of last, I believe, last Thursday, or 12:00 AM last Thursday morning. So, today, I have updated this from what's in your packet. So, as of today, we've received approximately 162, 163 comments. I believe in your packet, the presentation went out with your packet, it was about 140, and that was updated from even the handout you received in your packet. So, the online portal will close when the Planning and Zoning Board Public Comment Session is closed, which is expected to occur on November 9th at the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. The tentative schedule that staff has prepared is, as you've seen, the light gray dates are already passed, those are the meetings that have already occurred. So, the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed the plan at their meeting on September 14th, held a special work session on September 21st, and also reviewed it and had their first public comment session last Thursday, October 12th. They will also have a, they'll continue their public comment session and review the, and discuss the plan once more on November 9th with, excuse me, with the goal of having a recommendation on December 14th. For, for the Town Council, you worked, you reviewed the plan on September 19th at a work session, and then we have tonight's work session. And at this point, staff expects the adoption process with council to start in January, following the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation in December. As far as the status of the draft, so what you have right now is a September 25th draft, and it's the second draft, and it addresses Town Council, Planning and Zoning Board, and staff comments received through the initial Planning and Zoning Board Meeting and the first Town Council work session. The final draft plan is expected prior to the November 9th Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. At this point, our goal would be to get that out at least a week before that meeting, and that would, that would be addressing all the comments received to date, and that would be the final draft that the public would have an opportunity to comment on before the Planning and Zoning Board closes their public comment session at, on the 9th. Some future revisions that staff has already been discussing to the draft seat, conference transportation plan that the consultants are currently working on is adding some additional roadway cross-sections for local roads. Specifically, one area where we've realized that there's a little bit of a gap is for some Main Street-type roads for our future town center areas, we want to make sure we have some good cross-sections for that. We're also going to have the consultants revise the cross-section matrix on page 310 and the resulting information in Appendix A to make it clear and also to provide a better, a better picture of what roads in town should, are recommended to have which cross-sections. We're also going to be working with consultants to improve the intersection improvements recommendations and provide some more detail there, specifically provide some examples of what intersection improvements can be and some more information. And then, for implementation items, we're looking at some additional policy recommendations that would ultimately be brought back to council once the plan's adopted, and then looking at some recommendations for studies for specific intersection improvements, as well as some, some of the roadway extensions. One thing I would like, we'll be asking the council to discuss tonight a little bit along with the rest of the plan, is if there's any other specific implementation items that the council itself would like to discuss or would like to maybe see added into the draft So, the purpose of the work session tonight is, again, to review the comments you've received, that we've received to date that were in your packet, receive some information that you had requested at September 19th work session, continue to review in the September 25th draft plan, and discuss any additional information needs or proposed revisions before it goes back to the Planning and Zoning Board to finish their process. And that's all I have for tonight.
Benjamin, that presentation you just gave is included in that packet that we all got delivered to our houses, so thank you for that. I'm going to have that up in front of me so we can kind of follow the script here. There's an awful lot of comments, as we all know, and I don't know, I've tried to go through a lot of them. I didn't quite make it, so I still, I still need to go through all of them, but there's, I did get a couple, there are a couple of themes that you see over and over. I have a couple particular questions I had, not to do with kind of the, the major ones that are in here, so I have a couple, a couple of shortlists that I'd like to discuss additionally. Are there any, so this included the comments from the P&amp;Z meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll also include, in the, in the future, you'll add anything else that comes through the portal?
Yeah, so let me, let me clarify, actually. The spreadsheet, or the table that you had received were just public comments put in either through the portal, or emailed to the Planning and Zoning Board, or emailed directly to staff. The Planning and Zoning Board comments are being addressed with the, in, through the draft, through the revisions to the draft plan, through the different drafts that are coming out. So, we're just addressing those directly because ultimately, while this, the draft plan that you've seen as the work of, you know, the consultants and staff, it's ultimately going to be the Planning and Zoning Board's recommended draft plan.
Okay. So, would you like to, this is a question for council. I don't know that I want to get bogged down into rehashing all these comments here. I think they're valuable, I think we all need to, to read them and kind of take out of it and what we, what we care to. I'm a little more concerned, it's just some bigger picture items that may, may or may not be, you know, part of these comments. I didn't, a couple that I thought of, I didn't quite see addressed, and I want to just get some comments on those. And I, you know, we can, we can start with Michael and kind of work our way around the table, if that's okay, as far as, if there's anything that you want to talk about. I'm not going to ask for a vote tonight on anything, it's really just information gathering for us all so that we can continue to, you know, deliberate on this.
So, the process that you're suggesting is to collect council comments based on a variety of sources, either through their review of this material or through other conversations?
Right. And I'm sure we've all gotten, you know, the occasional email or phone call about some of these things, so if those are, address some of those now would be the case. Would that work, Benjamin, kind of the flow for the evening?
That would be great, and that was our hope is to, you know, really have y'all focused tonight on, on any remaining burning questions that you have and the big policy questions, and so that any, you know, we can take this information back to the Planning and Zoning Board as well, for them to discuss as they're finishing up crafting their draft.
Okay.
Before Councilmember Schlink begins dating, because I know he has a list, could I make some comments about the process itself, not necessarily the content?
Sure.
One of the things that is important is that we are doing a series of comments, and you are updating this plan over a period of time. When I first looked at this plan, I didn't know it was draft two. I saw draft. I assumed it's draft one, and I didn't know the date of it either. If we could add in the footer or header, "Draft Version X," and the date it was generated, that will help the council, the planning board, and members of the public understand where it is as far as its life cycle. It also will let people know for the feedback they provided, how that feedback landed in the plan, and I think that's kind of how the school board does it. They have a lot of comments that come through, and then they publish different drafts through their process, and I, and I think that works, so that would be helpful to me as someone who's reviewing this plan as well.
Are you saying like on these comment spreadsheets to have?
No, the plan, the plans is-
Well, no, I agree. I think they should be dated and numbered and stuff, just so that we know what we're looking at, but I'm thinking of these comments. It would be nice if this was, are these all portal, or are these people standing at the microphone, or these?
All those are either portal or email.
Okay.
And, and to piggyback on that too, is I was going through the comments, and I see you repeated, Carson repeating again and again, so don't know if the address time, the, the time of comments, the date of comment is received is kept there, and don't know if, if the revision is changing, but the comments are still remaining the same. And I can give two examples, like two addresses, at least I counted, at least 12 or 40.
Yeah, and-
So, how do we basically, so is that how the portal works, that they can give 15 inputs to the same address?
Exactly. There's no limit, we don't limit the public comment at all, we don't want to limit the public comment, and so all that spreadsheet is, is literally going through by order, you know, by the order they come in, and I'm putting in, you know, the, the information that's given to me through the portal. So, name, address, email address, given their comment, and then the date that's given.
We're not checking for accuracy of address, accuracy of name. Imagine that we are, what the information provided for taking us back and putting it in those back.
The email doesn't request a, a home address, so it's hard to compare the portal responses with the emails that may or may not contain address information, but they still are feedback.
Liz had a question.
So, I, I just want to clarify, I hear that these are the comments that came through the portal or came directly to planning staff, but there are emails coming to council too.
Right. And so by, by council policy, previous council discussion and policy, if the email is sent directly to the Town Council email, we are not including those.
Okay.
The Planning and Zoning Board does not go directly to you, so that's why we've added them, but per your policy, we have not added anyone's go to council. I'm copying all the ones that go to Planning and Zoning Board, so I'm able to forward all those to Ben, who are 100% sure those are being captured. Nobody in the planning department is aware of any emails that go directly to council, so we're not able to capture those. And just because of, I think it was during the UDO that made it in the aisle, where the decision was made, it went directly to council, you received it. You know, this is to help capture the comments that aren't, that you would not necessarily have access to.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
My challenge though, is that we're not, we do not have a complete record of all comments. The, the comments that come to council, I've been getting a lot of them, and I had hoped they would also be incorporated, because I am directing people to email the council if they don't feel comfortable with the portal, and some people are doing both, and some people are doing one and another, so I don't think we're getting complete information.
It was at our direction that that, I mean, it's our policy that we didn't include them, so it's either we change the policy or we-
Or do I tell them to go to the Planning and Zoning Board? Because it's, people, I have a lot of email, I'm sure you do as well. I don't know if I can sort through it all, categorize it all to the level of detail that has been presented, I really appreciate it, so.
I don't know that I have a good answer. I mean, our policy is not to include emails from council in, in the minutes.
Then I can forward them to the planning board.
Well, I, I was emailing people back and telling them that, "Thank you for your input, please do it to the portal, otherwise it won't count."
Right. So, I have not done that, and so there's comments that you've seen, but it's not in this document.
So, so one of the things that, that we've talked about doing from a staff perspective is, is we, certainly Erin and I get copied on the same information that Town Council does, and, and again, reiterating what our conversation was, is there was a mechanism, and we recognized that we had some issues with that mechanism, so we made those adjustments at the front end to make sure that the comments were being captured. Emails to Town Council were deemed by you to be opinion influencers, not official public comment towards the record, so that's, that, that doesn't mean we can't compile those emails. What staff is doing is making sure that they're preparing an FAQ document, which they could talk, that does address some of those things you've seen in the email, but as we've talked about, we're not going to point by point refute or respond to every email, which was what was really trying to be, occur before. But the content of that Town Council meeting is, is guiding the FAQs about those topics that are being raised.
So, the caution I have is that people tend to do counts, whether they're conscious or subconscious, and so if we don't have all the information in a single place, we're not getting the complete picture.
I appreciate that. The official place was the portal and the PZB comments.
Which didn't always work, the portal was down for a period of time.
Well, you can go back and ask them to submit it through the portal. I mean, I haven't seen all the ones you've, I'm not getting the same ones you are individually.
That's true, you don't-
So, but I don't think it's too much trouble for them to put it back in the portal if that's-
It's really difficult for people to write comments in the first place, so I'm a little worried we, we'll lose some of those.
But we went through this before, I would just say, with the Preston-
I understand, and we got a lot of good feedback. And, and are we capturing the public comments that were provided last week and it put into this matrix?
At the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, those are captured through the minutes, and those were, those are being captured. We're not going to cut and paste those, because those are going to be paraphrases in the minutes. This is any email that was sent directly to me, any emails sent directly to Ben, any email sent to the Planning and Zoning Board, any email that was submitted through the comment board, the one that we added that doesn't have a limit on the number of characters.
So, if, if, if Vicki in particular, or any one of us saw something that we think is kind of a unique email, or something that deserves, you know, maybe a broader bit of attention, is it okay if any of us forward it to you and thus get it into the minutes that way?
Yeah, I mean, if it's an individual email sent to a council member that hasn't gone to all of you and you forward it on to me, I mean, it would go to all council, those are being captured, I mean, we can add those to it.
I would just say, ask to review them. I mean, I, I know the ones that I've received, I think they're probably pretty well covered in, in what I'm, what I'm reading in front of me as far as the general idea. I don't know that I have any, I'm thinking of maybe one or two unique thoughts outside of, you know, the couple of bigger subjects here.
And, and I'll just add, my observation, because I see them, is there's not been an overwhelming number of them, unless you are getting individual, which we do not see. Staff sees what is sent to Town Council. If you are getting individual emails, none of us see those.
And I just remind you, there was a gentleman who got upset because one was sent individually to him, he sent it to an individual council member, and then it sent to everybody else, and he got upset with that, even though he understood it was public record and anybody could pull it, he was upset that it got forwarded.
But we can't win.
Well, I, I think that-
Well, I think, I think, I think we should encourage people, if they want to be on public record, to, to use the mechanisms that we provide and-
I would encourage everybody to actually put it through the portal that we have open, because the best place to put your comments, it goes directly to a specific email box, and we're going to go cut and paste away, you know, and add it. We have unfiltered comments directly there. It does get a little stranger when we get these emails that come directly to me, and it's a really specific question I need to point it on, something beneficial, that's sort of the process of clarification sometimes, but I forward them on to really, if the person wants their comments, I strongly encourage you to encourage them to use the portal to capture it.
Okay.
Okay.
We move on.
All right, let's go ahead. Michael, are you prepared to?
Sure. Again, I'm set to high level, I agree with everything my colleague was saying about dating this stuff, so we have a record of it, and that's where, just in my comments, will be going back to this plan that we did in 2009 now. Again, I was part of this, part of the citizen committee. There are two council members who are currently on the council who are part of this too, but I just think that continuity-wise, I would like to see some of the things brought over with it, to, because this one did a good job of, I think, helping the public understand how you got your, how the body, the committee, P&amp;Z, and everybody got to their decisions. And I would recommend that, for instance, on page 25, recommended roadway improvement timeline, they have an awful lot of roadways on here, and I just, to me, that's a continuity item which I'd like to see updated, for us to say what happened to these, because there are a couple here that were, people in Kids Creek still talk about, "Why aren't you going to do a railroad crossing at a certain road?" And so if we're going to drop that, then I just wanted to understand it. And I think there are roads here on here that we're not, we haven't discussed yet, or you haven't put in the plan, the airport, the two legs of the airport extension that coincide from Town Hall Drive to Church Street and Church, Town Hall Drive back to Twin Lakes.
So, Michael, is your, is your request on this particular item, I mean, what, what page are you looking at on the 2009 plan?
Page 25, it's Figure 5.6.
So, that has a summary of major roadway?
Yeah. And I don't, and maybe updated, because I don't even know if we do the STIP anymore, and do we have a ranking, do we, do we still do the M-TIP? Do we do things like that? Okay, well then that's good, because I think then that helps us understand how we're going to rank these things going forward, because right now, I don't, I don't understand which road is ranked where.
We do have copies of page 25.
Okay.
To, to Al Paso's around.
And so there are a few like that, and then I would just say there are a couple more. There's one has to do with the public transportation recommendations on page 31. I think that would be a good start of an update of what we want to accomplish, but I think there, you got, the previous plan covered it pretty well. We have the same kind of limitations on what we can do, but I think it's a good start. And then on page 33, there's the bicycle and pedestrian recommendations. For me, it's just continuity. How does this plan change that? And then there's some, I would just, there was another section where they talked about access management towards the end, which I really liked, because that, that was helpful, that was on page 37. And I had sent Benjamin an email, and I can forward to everybody else about it, kind of mentioned that I would talk about it, but I think that's helpful for the public or anybody else who's interested on how we get to this. And I know some of it's in this current plan, but if it overlaps, that's fine. I mean, you know, just, I'm trying to, in some way, if you guys think about how you do continuity from this previous plan, it seemed like it was a lot of hard work, a lot of citizens involved in it at the front end, not the back end.
I want to skip one clarification. So, when it comes to prioritization, and I think there's some higher kind of mid, low, medium, high kind of prioritization, and this is a little more specific, do you want that in the plan, or do you really want that more to be more of a CIP kind of volume? I'm just, I'm-
Right, I would take your input.
Do we really have CIP to the level that we have now, that we have at this time?
Well, that's why I wanted to see the comparison, because I would see which ones, you know, the update, is, is it working with a, a short, to be handled the short ones, or to be handled long ones?
Okay, I misunderstood the way you're asking. So, you're asking to compare prioritization, old plan to new plan, to see the differences between the two?
Yeah, just some continuity between the old plan and new plan, but you have some of this, you don't have to keep it all, but I don't know. You, you, what I'm seeing now doesn't, I like, kind of like this one table, because it's all in one.
You want to come over the roadmap from that one to a later one?
Sure. Yeah. Because they're-
And you like this format?
I did, if it's still, if it's still applicable. I mean, they even put in public input, stuff like that.
And Michael, I don't know that these are necessarily ranked on this page, is that a correct statement?
Correct, yeah, they were.
So, there's no ranking here?
Well, the CIP is, the STIP, and then at the other end, they are for the-
Well, I think that's almost more of a funding, funding consideration, whether it's town or-
No, that's what I meant, just if those are applicable, to do them now, but I don't under, right now, I don't know if you asked me, which one is the STIP, the highest one? I don't know.
Well, and that's, we don't, we as a town do not provide direct input into the STIP anymore. We, we have our, we provide our input through the NPO.
But back then we did, is my point. I was familiar with the process back then, that, that's the continuity I'm looking for, it's just whatever you think would be applicable.
Okay, we'll go back, take a look, and I think it's the format. You like this format better than the new format, that's really what I'm hearing, it's more legible. So, take a look at what we have to make it easier to follow and everything.
And then continuity from this point.
And there's going to be parts of plans that are, where there is not going to be continuity, and part of that is because a completely different methodology was used to partially build off the priorities, so you have to understand, taking new public input that were received, as well as the regional model that we didn't have prior, so there's going to be some differences, just because the methodology of how the plan was derived is slightly different than before, but I get it, I get 100% what you're saying. There are aspects of the old plan that you don't want to lose, and that there needs to be some better continuity between the old and the new, so it's easier for two people to relate it. I, I get what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, and the same thing with the land use plan portion of this.
Land use plan portion of this is going away, because the land use plan is a separate project, but we'll be talking more and more about here soon.
That's a whole nother.
But, but yeah, my big thing here would be just look at these roads and see if, why are we driving, some of them are obviously coming off, and some of them are coming new, but just the continuity for that too, I, I'm getting back to the public, I use Kids Creek, what happened at Church Street. They still, a lot of people still want a connection somewhere up there, a railroad crossing. So, that's it, and any of those other ones, I, and I'll turn around and send an email to them, the rest of the council, about some of the other tables I liked, that's all. And I, and I did like the fact that what they did with Crabtree Crossing, so if we have anything like that in this old plan, I think that's continuity that carries over, describing the research that was put into that, and I would just say going forward, doesn't have to be today, but what's changed from that now? I think the public would be, it would be, help the public to understand it a little better.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Michael. Just on that note, are we going to receive a bound copy of this plan once it's done? Because I still, I still look at mine from, from '09 and-
We, we're still discussing that. We purposely, with the contract, did not include that. The goal with this plan is that it's going to be, it's going to live much more online, because it'll be easier to update. The problem when we, with this, with the current plan is, we had a ton of copies, which we, I think maybe are just now getting the last copies given out or sold, but we have copies out there that have never been updated, and we've had various transportation plan amendments over the years, so we have people walking around with plans that are not necessarily up to date.
If you want a paper copy, I would file it off paper.
Yeah, okay, all right, so-
I can, I can, at least I can do it.
Some of those standards were like paper.
And one of the other things that we do have in our scope that'll be done once the plan is adopted is, you know, on, on this old plan, there was a small executive summary brochure, we're going to have a little bit of a beefed up version of that, that'll have the most used information in it. So, we will have some paper, but the goal was- So, well, we will have some paper, but the goal was to keep from having 500 or 1,000 copies of a, you know, 150-page plan floating out there for 10 years.
Gotcha. I'm sorry, Mayor, I have a few more comments, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, you know, we, we are, and you're going to be seeing it very soon, that we, you know, we revamped and cleaned up our code of ordinances, which had sort of fallen into disrepair. But, but there are, there are some ways that perhaps, if, if you want your hard copy, we can incorporate a process by which amendments could get collated into that. Erin and I can work on that and work with Ben and Courtney to see if there's something we can do there. It is important for you to have the most up-to-date information.
Thank you, thank you. So back to you, Michael. We can have a couple rounds here if you, if you think of something after you're done.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And on the, same thing, back to that chart. Another thing is, like, for instance, aviation, the grade separation at NC 54 and aviation wasn't included, but I think we're going to, you're going to include that in the upcoming one. I mean, just the idea, kind of like briefing it, what the state wants to do and three options, maybe?
Well, with that, we have, we've actually, as staff, have talked about some, some different ideas for that, and actually, and we'll be talking more with the Planning and Zoning Board. That, you know, that issue's come up with the Planning and Zoning Board. And we've talked to some of our, you know, partners, Campo and others, about ideas about, you know, what, what we should and shouldn't do, and what's the best way to deal with it. Ultimately, what will probably come back, well, we'll first ask, you know, get it and work through the Planning and Zoning Board and get it, and get their recommended draft. But one of the things that staff has started thinking about is not, because the grade separation of Aviation Parkway, or of Morrisville Carpenter Road, Aviation Parkway and C-54, that grade separation is so concerning, and frankly, at this point, none of the options are good. One thing that we're, we're looking at and talking to our consultants about is really staying silent on it. Not, and that's one thing that Campo has actually recommended, is that stay completely silent on any, on the grade, on any grade separation structure, anything. Focus more on what we really do want to see there, which, so I think, one of the recommendations you may see coming back to you is showing we're moving that intersection with 54 away from the railroad tracks. So you could potentially keep it at grade and keep that, and have the railroad operate better, and make it a safer crossing, because then you're not going to have the turning movements trying to turn over the railroad tracks. So we're going to look into, into some language with that, and potentially not, like this plan did, not really mention the grade separation. It wouldn't, it doesn't, by doing that, we still have the ability to work with DOT if it comes up, and, and we can come back to council, you know, and have an official council policy statement when it's needed. But we would have a recommendation, we can show DOT and be like, we want this, and it has nothing to do with grade separation. We want you to do this, and then, you know, see what, what happens from there.
They can not focus on the positives? That is what we're going to do.
Well, that's fine. And then could we do that for 54, too, instead of trying to say, we want six lanes? We want four? We're not saying we want six lanes.
We're saying we want more.
But they do. Would we have said that? Why, could we bring it into the plan, two more?
So one of the things that I, when I look at the plan, just to kind of use some of my general observations, I have very, very typical fine follow-up. So ways to lay out and come up with course, I mean, on a table. So one of the things, exactly what you already worked on, is creating cross-sections that follow the terminology that we are accustomed to, which is thoroughfare, you know, made it thoroughfare, not a thoroughfare, but a local. You know, maybe even having kind of a town center locals, even those have a different name. So really, we're going to break it down into terms that we, as a general, all understand, versus what's currently in here. So that's already been flagged as one of the things that's going to be helpful, with improving the, I think, the friendliness of the plan.
That was mentioned tonight already, right?
Yeah, that was the cross-section matrix up. That's...
And that's fine, because I know there was, I see it in, I thought I saw it in the plan, that there was still a segment of six lanes from northwest Maynard to Cary Parkway. And I know Cary doesn't want that.
Actually, Cary, so Cary, and Cary's plan, it is still shown as six lanes. The council has said they don't want it right now. And so what they're doing with the development that's occurring in that area is they're having the development reserve the right-of-way, or dedicate the right-of-way for six lanes, but they're only building four right now. But there, it is, in Cary's plan, they are still showing it as six lanes. And so, and, and again, we based a lot of, especially for roads like that, we based a lot of our recommendations on the model information, and the model is showing for that section of NC 54, six lanes is better, and is what is ultimately going to be needed. Now, if the council wants to make a strong, you know, if the council only wants to see four lanes in the plan, we can certainly update the plan with that information, and that can be, you know, that's certainly something the council can do. But the data right now is showing six lanes in that section is what's needed.
And then from Cary Parkway to Weston is how many? Six lanes also?
I believe in our plan...
That's all I'm trying to say, is if we look at that, and just, I just want to make sure that maybe we're not doing what Cary's doing, asking for six, but planning on four, and then we're taking more of the ultimate, you know, required to give, then they're going to have, they're giving over more than they should. And I think it would help, again, development through the town maybe happen a little quicker. Okay. And then, do we want to incorporate at our last joint meeting with Cary, they listed, they handed out this list of roads that they're working on, which all impact east-west connectors in Morrisville?
That information is more current, and so the, with the plan, we're really trying to focus on future going out to, I mean, remember, this plan's going out to 2040, so it's looking out 20-plus years. So some of that stuff that's happening in the next, you know, couple of years, especially if it's outside of our jurisdiction, it doesn't, it's not something necessarily needs to be in our plan. It's our point of view.
Okay, that's fine, I didn't know, because again, everything impacts us, but the big ones for me are the toll road connections that drone at Morrisville Parkway and Morrisville Carpenter, at their end of Cary. So, you know, I think those one impact us, but, okay. Then I just had a couple little things about intersection improvements. That was in the last plan necessarily, but, and I brought it up before, but if we could look at things that we're looking at, like the Parkside Valley at Davis, and then Parkside Valley at Lewis Stevens. Because we have a segment in there, for instance, on Lewis Stevens, where you, we talk about going to four lanes, building it from four lanes, you know, to admit it where it ends. But why don't, why aren't we coming back then and fixing the intersection, making it a four-lane problem? You know, Parkside Valley and before? Because you're going to have a bottleneck then. You're going to have two lanes, everybody using two lanes, then it's going to open up to four. I wish the plan would reflect that at some point, we want to make everything four lanes.
That's what's in the plan now. For Lewis Stevens Road, the plan is for Lewis Stevens Road, long-term, to be four lanes. DOT is only building two lanes right now.
Who will build the other two?
That'll be up to either private development, or the town, or a future NC DOT project.
Right, but, okay, so is this the appropriate time? For instance, I know there's a section that's going through Breckenridge that there will be no development, it just backs up to homes.
And that section, we have worked with DOT to try and, they, the goal on that section for DOT is to build, go on and build four lanes in that section, where it's, there's nothing that's ever going to build it. But all the other sections, DOT is only going to build two lanes right now, but they are, they have said their, their plan is to purchase the right-of-way for four lanes. But the, from the plan, from our comprehensive transportation plan perspective, it does show Lewis Stevens Road as four lanes, and that's all the plan itself really needs to show, because the plan's looking at the ultimate.
Just as long as, again, there's a connection, because things, I'd rather see them written down and not rely on people's memory.
For the public and everybody else.
If I may add, too, if you mentioned intersections initially, you opened a comment. If there are specific intersections that you know you specifically want to study, those are the things that we can talk about, actually adding as action items. If you go over the intersection, you can go over the solid, if you want to, you can do it. We asked the time to kind of talk about those, so they can be added as action items, you know, in the plan. And then we can come back and talk about the actual cost and study it along those lines. But those are very clear action items that you should talk about adding to the plan.
Good. And then the same logic is with parks and, the parks and the greenway trails. If we're picking up comments about trying to connect that, and that he got up on the northwest side of town, but I'm just more familiar with that, I'm sure there are other locations where you, we could connect greenways. Millisent, that's the one. If we're not going to make it a road, how about a greenway connection?
And we want to talk about intersections that you particularly looked at in the action plan, and then we can talk about greenway connections to neighborhoods, because those are kind of two, three, four items, but I think there's a lot of good points that we can put behind those.
Right, well, I thought the plan covers that. So I'm still at the general, though, but just wanted to say that. That's fine, I mentioned that one before. I'm assuming some of this gets, has been picked up, or do you want, later on, I'll send an email?
I think now your opportunity is really...
So let's get into the meat of it. I'm anxious to get it.
I think you've given some great points, and, you know, and I'm certainly not trying to steer the direction here, but don't just leave them as points, let's turn them into something, would be something I would probably encourage. If it only takes five minutes to do it.
Then I'll be quiet while other people talk, or whatever you want to do, right? Because you want...
Talk about Millisent Road, the connection to Little Drive though?
Yeah, okay. Is that a road, you want to do that, or you want to talk, okay?
I mean, those are, those are neighborhood connections to greenways.
Yeah, I think we have comments, too, that want that. I think it's appropriate. Again, I think, just like what we do roads, I think the criteria is, this part of town has no greenway connections. They have maybe sidewalks, but there were greenways, and they were taken away years ago, but that's fine. But RTP is ready to do that, like they're on Davis, like they're finishing the one on Davis Drive. You know, it looks pretty simple to me. We already own the, we already own the land. It was never, it was talked about, but it was never on a plan for a road. Okay, so that's where I'm in, in the neighborhood, I think you've heard from, the HOA, I think, weighed in, they don't want it. So I think it's appropriate, then, like we did with Crabtree Crossing years ago, make it identified in this plan as a greenway connection.
And again, on, on that one specifically, we did, it is currently designated as right-of-way. It is a public right-of-way, and it is a graded right-of-way. However, I mean, we certainly, you know, will, want the plan to, to reflect the council and the public's perception, or, you know, what they want to see. I will say, just to, in case you haven't gone through all those comments, there were at least two comments, I believe, about, you know, more, and it wasn't real clear, but there were two comments that were more maybe in favor of a road at Mills, of that Millisent connection, rather than a greenway. But of course, you know, we will, the, the plan needs to be what you want it to be. And so, but now is a good time to talk about that. I mean, if that's something that the council would, would like to see, we certainly can, you know, work on making that change and, and take it in through the Planning and Zoning Board.
And then I'm going to add a question, I heard you have a different, say, further than you're going to have for that, you know, for the road along the line. You can take it one step further, but it's true, like, and the air is looking at RTP between the one and the other. So then, that's where you're going to take it one step further in that evaluation, you know, if there is a plan that has to be made. So that part of your action is going to go a little bit further in studying, you know, if you're going to make this connection, it's going to be a greenway everywhere, because the greenway on the north side of the line, the stop sign on the left, it's literally a little far from there. It does even touch up the little. So I just think about full-sto, if we're going to talk about it, we need to talk about the fact that there's still a little piece of strip that we would have to obtain in order to build it, because we don't have all the land.
RTP is already, it's previous, years ago, it's agreed to that, like other things, that they would allow, it's a good idea. But, okay, it's the same thing, but that's fine.
Just a, I know, I wish you would step further with regards to your action items, I just want us to think about it. And I'll say it's a bad idea, I'm just saying, let's just think about it.
Okay, and I'm, for the council, then, I'm sure everybody has some others. Do you want to individually go over these? I don't think the concept was...
If you know a neighborhood connectors, we can either list them out now, or we can give you a deadline to email them to us. There are specific neighborhood connectors that you want evaluated.
Okay, so when, when you talk about evaluating, and you also use the word "study," are you saying these would be areas that we would actually delve into deeper and study, like build, no-build, pros and, okay. I, I need that, quite frankly. I, I will tell you, I'm, I need that to decide whether to leave some of this stuff in the plan, or whether to take it out of the plan. Because I, I really would like to understand the pros and cons and the implications in 20 years, at, at 2040, too. So that, that's going to be important for me. So if that's not information we're going to get through this process right now, then I need that to be added in.
Do you, then there's kind of two projects. You can operate in the philosophy, it's better to have the dot on the map, to have it and not need it. And then the thing is, it cannot be constructed until such time that studies are performed to truly evaluate the costs, the pros, the cons, et cetera. And based on the outcome of that study, the line can be removed, saying it's not constructible, you know, for whatever reason. But the flip side of that line is, on there, if development comes through, I mean, they're required to build it. It's just not necessarily town dollars, it'll only be private dollars. So that's the advantage of keeping it on the plan. Now, flip side to that is, you know, you take it off the plan, a little bit of valuation that we may want to consider putting in here, then we can go put it back on the plan, you know. You know, you traditionally don't build anything that's not on the plan, so that's kind of the downside to it. And then if a private development came in and wanted to build something right on top of that spot, it's built, and we move on. So you lose that opportunity. So kind of any connections that we talk about, just think about that. So part of it may be, either don't include it and study it, or include it and study it, and just understanding the pros and cons of either approach when you're making those particular decisions. And then there's really a right and wrong way, you know, to do it. It's just weighing both out.
Courtney, without, without designating what it is on a map, is it possible just to have a, you know, study area, or, you know, a study, we're studying this feature for either roadway or greenway or whatever?
You could say for neighborhood X, perform a study to see where the viable connections to a greenway could exist, or some of those lines that you could do. I mean, I think that's really good, it's, it's built out, because no development's going to happen, so you don't worry about that risk, you can keep it, you know, it's just a circle, you know, as you say, the general area.
How soon, if we, you know, if we have a couple of these sort of areas that we want to have further study on, what is the timeframe for actually doing it? Because I think, I think, you know, some people might think, well, they, you know, they didn't make a decision on it, and when is, you know, it's going to be punted down the road for another council or another plan. I think we'd have to have a commitment on when we're going to study and make some decisions on these things.
Well, if I can jump in, I mean, really, that would be, that would be up to you. I mean, we can, with action steps or implementation steps, such as, you know, study X, Y, or Z, we can make those as, as general or specific as the council would want them. Granted, you know, as councils change, the, the plan's an overarching policy document, and that doesn't mean that, you know, just because we say in this plan, you know, area X will be studied by, you know, 2018 or 2025, a future council may not want to spend the money to do that study. We, as staff, would, of course, be pushing, you know, if things are in the action plan and implementation plan, that's one of the things we would want to be bringing back to you, you know, every, especially every budget year, is, here's your next package of implementation items from the transportation plan, you know. This includes these studies of these areas, or, or these specific features. And back to your other question about how general or, or specific to get at certain things, we can, we can be, as Courtney said, with built-town neighborhoods, it's easy to be very general. In other areas where there's future potential for development, if we're not, if we're real general, it would be very difficult for us to still keep development from potentially building an area where something could never be done again. And...
And I think the best example of that I really have, just for perspective, is, you know, we put on the last transportation plan, the grade separation requirement. We even went as far as saying here's potential location. If you would have asked me in 2007, if I thought in less than 25 years, that grade separation was going to be built, I would have told you no. I mean, I'm pretty sure when the Sheets project came in, we're like, you need to design around it. But I doubt it's going to happen anytime soon, we're kind of ask, you know, it's not funded, and before it's funded. But if we had not had that potential alignment in there, and Sheets have oriented themselves a little bit different, we could be having a different conversation about the grade separation. So that's when, even if we know we can't even afford to build it, you know, or we may never even build it, you know, it may not end to the very end, you know, 2035, that's when it, it still may be important to put on the plan, even if it's something that we know that, you know, grade separations are not something that town can find. You know, it's still worthwhile, so that we can ensure development goes around it, or does their fair share, you know, to help, you know, force them to build it. And that's the only thing I'd kind of say, keep in mind with some of these. And that's again, on undeveloped land. Once it's developed, and we're talking greenway connections, the general state.
All right, so, Michael, is the suggestion that we, if there are such things like this, I think there are a few others, that are going to probably need additional study, without a commitment either way? Is that, is that an approach that...
I think the plan that the town owns would maybe be appropriate. I mean, there are other greenway, there are other areas where we own roads, like Airport. If we're not going to build it, it's going to be a while before we build Airport, then buying out a greenway through there, you can always, it's easier to dig up a greenway. So I would say, yeah, I would encompass that whole concept.
Oh, you're talking from Church West?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there are areas where...
More Town Hall, maybe trying to connect to Church, trying to connect with our church street park.
And the T O D around that. And that brought up about roads for the T O D. I think we need to look at where you want to do that cut, for the various reasons you just described about sheets. And development wants to know that, if they're going to put something there, it's got, you know, it's on this road which leads to the, you know, transit location.
We gave each of you a map, and just said, you know, you know your neighborhood in some ways better than we know your neighborhood. So, you know, there's a greenway running through your neighborhood, and it would be really nice if you didn't have to walk, you know, exceed this direction if you had a connection in here, you know, or just from the times you walked for you when you were to cut out the Town Hall ride. It would be nice, you know, face. Would that be a helpful exercise of where you would like to see them? You know, we can send you markers and say, green markers for roads, brown marker, you know, or anything along those lines. I mean, would that be helpful? We did that?
Wasn't that nice, a start of the process?
But we're going a little bit further. I think we're now taking it, you know, to Councilmember Schlink's point, you know, Millisent. Do we do a greenway? Do we do a road? Do we need to study it further? It's probably the third option potentially, because I think it's a little unknown as to what sugar shouldn't happen there. You know, and that way, he can kind of circle it. You know, this is the area that should be studied. You know, he thinks for greenway. You know, that's fine. You know, somebody else may say circle for road, but if I come back with seven maps and say circle, circle, study for a greenway connection, guess what? We probably should put it in the plan, you know, study for greenway. I mean, it's just, it's a food for thought, and that we're going to be too lost in the weeds right now. And then we're really able to put into some action items from the plan. And as Ben said, come back every year with implementation items, that are turning those into the studies that we talked about.
Okay, I might, Michael, we're going to move on here, just to give everyone a fair chance. But I, I would just say, if, if we do agree to do this kind of study approach, that we have a kind of an end, an end date in mind, it's not just open. Because I, I think we owe it to, you know, the folks that have commented, and ourselves, not to just punt it.
Yeah, I agree.
I was going to say, I agree too. And to that point, this already is going to January into a new council. There clearly will be one new member of the council. So, is it possible, well, I guess it depends on what this list looks like, but it, it's possible to make these studies happen in the next two years? That's kind of a question. I know that didn't sound like a question.
I mean, I don't care how much they are under study.
Right, I know, I know, yeah.
Based off the comments that I received, in some of the areas that I know that are a little more gray, you know, like Millisent, I don't think there's going to be a ton. But, but what I'm hoping that we may get out of this is there may be some neighborhoods that don't have great connection to greenways, you know, and that may be study and connection opportunities, and particularly for those people like that. Kind of, could be wrong.
All right, Michael, anything else before we move on? Okay. Okay, please. TJ?
So, we're talking about pretty decently, full-blown studies. What about like pros and cons with each of the things listed, rather than just sort of saying connectivity? I mean, that's something that, I think, wouldn't take a whole lot of effort. At this point, when we're already getting public input, without any pros and cons associated with any of these things, it's really, it's hard for the residents to make informed opinions. So I think that's sort of gotten us into having all these comments, because people aren't sure why we're doing things. So, but that being said, I would be interested in the Davis Drive-Morseville Parkway intersection, having a little bit more meat on that bone, because that's one that I know that could really be improved. But how would it be improved? Like you guys said in the beginning, some examples, some thoughts about that would be really helpful. Councilmember Schlink was talking earlier about four lanes versus six lanes in the plans. I caution us against going ahead and allowing things to be reduced from what the data shows we would need in the future. We are now in the position we're in, because we didn't allow for four lanes in the past, and certain portions of 54. So, I don't think we want to set ourselves up to need six in the future, but only allow for four. We don't want to have to buy all the right-of-way more expensively. So those are just a couple of thoughts. I was just a little more hopeful, this is my first time through a transportation plan, that we would have had a little bit more of the pros and cons before we got this far in the process for public input, and things like that. I think it would have been more helpful to get the public involved after there was a little bit more understanding of why each of these was designed. Keep in mind, this is a draft plan. No one's approved any of this, but some people feel that it has been approved, or it's going forward, and there's nothing they can do about it. And that's why there's so much angst over some of these issues. And I think that could be avoided in the future moving forward.
Bless you. All right, Liz?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts right now. Courtney, you said something, or Ben, I forget who said it. You, you said the grade separation, and we need to look at 54 and maybe moving 54. Are you talking, are we going back now to talking about moving 54 further east, or...
Well, to the north, yes.
Okay, to the, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Away from the tracks?
Yes, yeah.
Isn't that east, isn't that northeast? So how, how, so, and you said we need to be specific about that now. How are we going to do that? So tell me how that, or is that another study area?
Well, I mean, we don't have to be, for that one, well, we, we have an option there. We can be specific, which will help us, from staff, you know, as, as areas get developed, to be able to say, this is what our plan shows as being the future connector from Aviation Parkway 254. We can, and then, I think the initial draft of the plan, we actually, or in, or in an early draft, when we were working through it with the consultants, we'd actually at one point showed two different alignments. You know, one, one a little ways away from the intersection, one a little bit further. The problem when we have two like that is that, how do, you know, we as staff handle it when development comes through? Do we require, you know, if the development's on one alignment, require them to reserve right, dedicate right-of-way, and then another development comes in on the other alignment, they have to dedicate right-of-way, and now we have these two pieces of right-of-way. Generally speaking, I know that, you know, I can say that D O T has said, they, you know, the further away from the intersection, they can move that connector, whether it's a connector, or whether it's 54 itself, the further away they can move that, that intersection, the better. So, what they have, I think what D O T has sort of indicated that would be their preference, would move it all the way over to Cotton Drive, which is as far as you can get it. Now, if it's moving 54 as a whole, I don't know that they would necessarily want to move the entire 54 that far. 54 itself may just move just far enough to get it out of the railroad right-of-way. But it, but if that is the case, then we would still need that connector for the turning movements.
Okay, so how, how, where, how are we going to determine all that? And when are we going to determine all that?
And, and that's where it, it gets a little bit more difficult, especially from this plan. I think, you know, at this point, one of the easiest things to do would probably be to show the right-of-way for 54 going four lane, you know, show 54, we know it's going to be four lanes. Not necessarily show a new location of it. I mean, we could show it, you know, just adjacent to where it is today, indicate that it would move out of the side of the railroad right-of-way for that short distance, but then show the intersection itself being moved further away from those railroad tracks.
Okay, all right. Somehow we have to answer that question, or settle that issue.
We can continue to work with our consultants, too, on that. And the easier thing may be to just bring something forward as a draft, and then let you react to that.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we can then tweak it through your process.
Yeah, it's easier to react to something than, yeah, okay. And so along those same lines then, and we've talked about this before, about the 147 connection. And that also is going to be a future study. I mean, I know we've had that, that kind of pre-study. When is all that going to happen, too? Because that's of interest, I think, to, I think, all of us.
Yeah, so with 147, we, we have included it in the draft plan right now, because it was in the previous plan, and we know now it's a committed funded project by N C D O T, and so we wanted to include in this plan, even though a very, very, very small section of it is actually in the town limits and under our control. More as a, you know, hey, public, this is probably coming. N C D O T is working on that. I don't, I, my guess is that it'll still be another year or two before we get, before they get a whole lot into project development, and start coming out with alignments and intersection studies. So, I mean, certainly, if the council wants to do a study, you know, if the council wants the town to do some sort of study, we can. But it is a N C D O T funded project. They will be doing studies. They've done, I understand they've done a couple of traffic forecasts for it, and are , are starting to work through some very preliminary information on it. And I've asked Campo to follow up and try and make sure that they remember to keep us involved as they move forward, but we just don't know a lot about it right now. And so that's one that's, it, other than really showing it on the plan and, and showing the cross-section, we won't, in our jurisdiction, there's not a whole lot we can do right now. We just don't have the information.
And I know we've all, we've had this conversation several times in the past couple of months about the idea of somehow making sure that that curves over to Davis Drive is important.
And that, I mean, that certainly is something that we can, you know, I mean, if the council wants to make that statement, that they don't want to see it coming into McCrimmon Parkway, we can certainly, you know, have our plan show that the likelihood of D O T following that is very low. Because, and I mean, partly, too, we don't have control, you know, once it, it's only the first 800,000 feet of the road is in our jurisdiction, and then it's in R T P. And so, and D O T's going to have to negotiate with the R T P, whatever they want to do. So that's where it's, you know, I think we have to be careful, and there's just only so much we can really do when it comes to 147. But if there is a strong desire from the council to show in the plan that they don't, that we don't want it to connect to McCrimmon at all, then we certainly can make that policy statement. But again, if D O T says, well, it's going to connect there, is there a question of us being able to lose a little bit of leverage?
So on that, on that particular connection, I know that we had, had talked about maybe a local road, you know, make it a local road as much as possible, and hopefully have a connection over to, is it Childling Grove?
Yes.
Is that still part of this plan?
Yes, so in the current draft, we do show that as one of our neighborhood connectors.
All right, all right. Thank you, Liz, I didn't...
So, I, I think, well, I, somehow we need to identify, like, we're talking about Millisent, adding that to some kind of study, somehow identifying this one. I don't know whether we pay for that study, but that there's a study to come, and we want to participate, or somehow have that recognized somewhere in this documentation.
I would say, I mean, if there's a specific study, it would probably be best to have the town, have it be a town-led study. I mean, I think at this point, any studies D O T does are going to be more related to getting the road built. So they're, I think, from the D O T standpoint, they're sort of past the feasibility studies, and, you know, what, whatever studies they'll have left to do are probably going to be more guided by environmental permitting regulations, and then, you know, traffic studies to make sure that they don't completely slaughter the, the other roads in the area when they build this connection.
And I'll just make two more comments, and then, as far as, I think, I'm pretty sure TJ said, the Davis Drive-Morseville Parkway intersection, I think that needs to be studied. I think there are some, you, you hear the frustration from the public. I drive it all the time, and I think there are some small improvements that potentially could be made there. I know there's, you know, pros and cons, but...
Well, if I can clarify the intersection studies, and, and I touched on it briefly in the presentation, but what we have currently talked about, and, and really what staff would be proposing in the draft that would go to the, go to the planning zoning board, is having really a toolbox. And so the plan would lay out a toolbox of potential intersection improvements, going from, you know, very small, minor improvements up to, you know, construction and everything. But would lay out some, some examples of, of typical types of intersection improvements. And then the act, and then we would identify, we would solve the map, identifying the intersection improvements that, based on the data, may be needed at some point in the future. Then, the corresponding action step would then be to study each intersection on its own when, when the time comes, or on some sort of regular schedule. I mean, we can, we can determine what that action, specific action step would be, but the goal, the idea is that we, in the plan itself, we wouldn't really, we would not be dictating specific improvements for specific intersections, because it's, it really, you can't do that in a plan at this level. And so the action step would be, you know, more than likely, every year, you know, pick two or three or five intersections, and do traffic studies at those intersections, determine what improvements are really needed. And that's where we would determine, you know, hey, a westbound right turn lane would solve all the traffic issues in the world of this intersection, let's just go build it. And it would give us, and then we'd be able to get an idea of what it would cost, and what would be needed and everything. And so that's currently the direction we were headed. Now, if there's a different direction that council would like to see, we can certainly talk about it. But that's really, at this level of the plan, that's, that's what we view as the best way to handle those intersection improvements.
That's kind of what was going to come out of the plan, the actual improvement associated with a timeline and the cost.
Oh, out of this plan?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's much too granular, is what you're saying.
One of the intersections, that's, it would, I mean, we could certainly do that, but we would then, it would put the timeline out significantly more, and we would then have to go and study every single intersection, do traffic counts. Because in order to determine what, I mean, I can look at an intersection, give you, and say, you know, well, you know, it looks like maybe this improvement would probably help, but without actually doing a traffic analysis at that intersection, taking counts, looking at how many, how much traffic's turning versus going straight, what the signal timings are, what other, you know, what other constraints are there, we really can't, you know, we can take a shot in the dark, but we really can't promise that, you know, we can't, we could recommend an improvement, but we couldn't guarantee that would solve the issues. And so that's where it's better to, to do a study coming, you know, the plan is just identifying, by the date, by the model, this intersection may have a problem in two years, five years, 10 years, but then we can go and do an actual study and say, okay, this is where the problem is today, or this is, you know, the data's, that's on the ground existing, is showing us, this is where the problem is probably going to be.
The plan can make suggestions about the priority of the ones we should probably look at sequentially.
Yes.
So that would be very helpful.
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
And I think we kind of have a standing, Liz, I, I thought it was, we were, you know, setting aside money every year for kind of these, transportation improvements are more easier, you know, maybe extend a turn lane, or more stacking here, or maybe it's a crosswalk or something we could do easily at that intersection. So I, I feel like we're almost, we've already dedicated money to it, and we want to do it. I don't, and I'm fine if it's in the plan or not in the plan, but I, I think we already have a process. I don't think we've, it's almost like the sidewalk prioritization discussion, you know, there's funding, there's a methodology, and we're starting to do some. I don't think we're quite that, that far with this other notion, but maybe that's something we need to make sure, you know, we do.
Yeah. And I, I believe, I'd have to look back, but I believe in the current draft, we do have some level of prioritization. we do have some level of prioritization for the intersections as far as near, mid, and long. So we, I mean, we can say with that, or, I mean, we can also look at making it a little bit more, I mean, use, if, if what we have today, if we move forward with that, then we would then, you know, staff would say, okay, near-term intersection improvements are these three. So maybe over the next, you know, next fiscal year, we would ask for money to study, you know, this one or two, and then the following fiscal year, we would ask for money to make those improvements. Or maybe ask for a pot of money to say, you know, and say, let us study all of them and then whatever we have left over, we'll do whatever improvements we can this year and come back. So we can do it that way, or if you, or we can add some more specificity to it. Using the model, we can at least, we can probably get a little bit more, we can get a little more granular with it as far as, you know, getting a better idea of maybe timeline if you wanted it, but at the same time, keeping it a little bit higher level like it currently is gives us some flexibility as well.
And it sounds like if we can identify some of these things and put them in an appendix or some, some index in here, you know, you know, future studies will be done on these intersections or roadways or greenway connections. And then we can, it's easier to work it if it's in writing in front of us and it's part of the adopted plan, so.
Luckily, we have a lot of streets that are already, and intersections are already under, under...
So Liz, did you have anything else?
We can move down, we can go around again.
All right, so let's try to get through a couple more before our break. Steve?
Yeah, I think for me, the comments were very helpful. I still, there's just so much information, I tend to get lost when I look at all these projects, so I tend to take a step back and, and the reason that I'm here is I want to sort of be able to get very strategic on looking long-term. We hear congestion, congestion, congestion all the time in Mooresville and what kind of solutions can we invest in that minimize congestion and provide mobility for the maximum amount of citizens. So I think for me, just, you know, data would be important for me, but it sounds like that's going to be too much work to get too granular, but it certainly would help to get a better idea of where the most traffic is and what the impacts are so that when we're looking at these projects, after we have a list, we would be able to take a step back and say, okay, now where, where is the opportunity? Assuming we knew the transportation plan done, I want, my vision is being able to get to a point where we can say, okay, this is where we want to make this investment to get the biggest bang for a buck. And maybe that's where we're headed, but I feel like I'm getting so lost in the weeds that I don't think I'm bringing much value to this process because it's just a bunch of projects and things like that. And I'm willing to give in my input, but it's frustrating to me because I feel like I'm running in a race and I can't see the finish line where we're trying to go. But, you know, I think...
I encourage you to, I mean, do your homework, read the comments, get involved. This is our plan. We need everyone to participate in it.
Having a plan is one thing, but after we get the plan, what's the process moving forward in terms of, you know, how, what are we going to act on, how are we going to...
Well, we have a CIP, CIP to prioritize. Benjamin's working the, you know, the state-level funding. We have opportunities for, you know, law funding in the future, so there's lots of things that happen because of this.
It's the blue ribbon.
Yeah, so we come up with a plan and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page of, you know, how do you develop a plan and then looking at all the different options.
Well, and that's where the prioritization process and that, that's in the plan that, that we've talked about, that's where that would come in for the road projects, because that's where we do look at the data, at the congestion, at the safety and everything. And so we use that data to come out and say, these are the road projects that need to be done sort of first and then in the, you know, next five to 15 years, these are the projects that should be done in 15 to 25 years, and then these are projects that are good to have, but you can wait 25 years to do them. And so we, we do have that in the current draft. And then, of course, the, you know, when the, in the action plan, I mean, we certainly will have implementation steps of, you know, trying to hopefully continue to push town council and the town to say, okay, we have this plan, we have this prioritization, you know, let's look at every year, you know, what can we do, you know, what, what can we do to start making movement on our transportation plan?
Yeah, because, I mean, if you look at, like, some of these, with the 2009 plan, what's nice is, you know, we came together and knocked one of these out. That was our vision. We came in, it was on the plan, right? And we came in and I, I can't even remember what were the factors, a lot of it was, obviously it's the worst, one of the worst congested roads in Mooresville, but we made a commitment. It's on the plan, we're going to, and it took us a few years to get it done from the time we started talking about it.
We can't execute everything on the plan at the same time. We don't have enough money. And the state of North Carolina doesn't have enough money either. But we can go through with guidance on prioritization and sequential building and, you know, stress points, working on that.
And that's, and that's, my final point is, I think it's so critically important that we, we, we let the citizens know that as we do this plan, because there's a lot of cities out there that want everything all at once and they, you know, congestion, congestion, congestion. And I don't think a lot of people know the list, how big the list is, what the cost is, and how long it comes.
And it takes five years once it begins on.
Yeah, exactly. So I think one important part of the plan is being able to make sure that we're, you know, not only us internally understanding this, but, you know, I know we're doing that, but I just think it's really important. That's all I have for now.
And Steve, I'll just add, the other big value of this is that it sets a roadmap literally for future developers, development, so people know what to kind of lay off of or what, you know, where they, where they might want to put something. So unless we do that part of it, it's a, you know, if, if we hadn't done the TOD and someone would, just wanted to put a, you know, shopping center there, that, that opportunity wouldn't be there for the future transit stop and so on and so forth. But I have, you know, so we have to, you know, a part of this is on, you know, setting the table for future development and giving people an idea of where they may or may not have road connections or greenways and things like that, so. And it's a, it's a living document. I mean, we're, you know, the 2009 is still changing, this one will never, ink will never dry on this until the next one, you know, 10 years from now, so.
It's a definitely useful for us allowing private investment to invest in charter construction system, and it's also a good tool that allows us to leverage federal and state funding. So I think those are kind of three big key things that come out of this plan. You know, and I think maybe hearing, you know, Councilman Michelin said and hearing some of the stuff that Mayor Prosser said, you know, I think it would be very helpful to go back to the page 25, the numbers went through and said, this is what we've done, this is one of the processes I need to add. And as you said, you know, once removed, barring and removing it, because it's, you know, sometimes, you know, it's not great to have plenty, you know, great proceeds, it's best to be strategic and have three of them. There are things on those lines and talk about what has occurred. And that may be helpful too, just to understanding some of the great things that can come out of this process.
Yeah, we, we're, a lot of these are in, in the works or some already accomplished. So that's, I think, that's significant. I think we need to kind of be proud of that and make sure that we don't lose sight of that.
And so it's kind of one of the other two, I was kind of saying this, but, you know, Mayor Prosser, this offer of us everybody else, we've been holding off until y'all had y'all's plan, really kind of looked at our plan in January. But, you know, happy to sit down, you know, but I would sit down with each one of you if you just start understanding a component of it, talk through it. Also, if you're not understanding it, somebody else is not understanding it and maybe to clarify it. So, you know, it's kind of holding off until January, just at that point, we've had a huge amount of volume, which will be significant changes that are being, but if you need to lead what's left for that, we are happy to do so. If you want to talk about any specific point, just give clarification.
There's a lot of information, but it's, you know, the seven of us are in, you know, this is, we're going to put our names on this thing and we need to make sure that we each understand it and are committed to what we're signing up for. So I would just say, you know, we're going to have to buckle down, do our homework and take advantage of the staff's kind of offer to, to help us through any questions that we may have. I know a couple of us citizen, Michael, council members, went through the '09 process and I didn't think it was that bad. I mean, we were doing two at once, right? We were doing the land use at the same time. So is it, I don't know, it seemed like it wasn't that onerous. But you have, you have to, you know, if you haven't started reading, start reading and get into it, so. Satish, you want to go ahead and then I think, Vicki, are you okay if we take a break after? Satish?
Yes, because I've got my...
Oh, okay, yeah, we're going to definitely take a break then after Satish. Go ahead, sir.
I got to tell you, like, there's one plan, I read it till 2:00 in the morning, I really enjoyed it. Because it was... The thing is, I, I went through each and every street, I liked the EPDO scores and was looking at the crash report. One thing I did not understand, which I was asking Benjamin, is what does EPDO score stand for and how does the crash rating summary equate back to the, the campus score, to the end product of the whole thing? Because I do remember I asked a question, the presentation which was given to us, there was a lot of streets which was given, many were funded in the planning and some were town, some were, you know, DOT combination of last funding. I didn't see anything in this that kind of chopped down in a long version for us. Like, I was looking for that kind of sheet which would have given us a plan, right? Like, I should have given some streets, but not really, you know, say, these are funded streets for 2021. It's already marked for funding as part of this one, step five, and this is already taken care of.
But would it go in this plan? Because those numbers fluctuate every so often. This plan could be in...
Yeah, well, we...
Is it a mismatch?
We do, in, in chapter three, which is the roadway chapter, table 3-1 is, is, gives the committed STIP projects, and we do have in there the year and the funding amount. Again, it would be as of, you know, the adopted step. And then we do have a map that goes with it. We are working, one of the things we've talked to our consultants about is clearing up, figuring out a little bit ways to show that data, show that a little bit better. But, I mean, one of the things we do want to do with this plan is show how successful we've been. And so we are going to, you know, we will be clear in this plan, these are roadway projects that, you know, we need, they were identified in the previous plan, but they're funded, they're, they're going to be constructed. And so we want to spend most of the plan really focused on projects that are not currently funded.
So you're saying 3-1, which is page, which one is that?
Should be page, yeah, 3-3.
3-3.
Is that in an appendix? You put funded into an appendix, that way it's a historical log of success or, or not?
So, yeah, these are the U, but these are all, if I look at this, none of them are like town, right?
We have the McCrimmon Parkway extension, which, that's in there because it's also in the step.
Okay, so...
And then the, well, all of our town-funded, all of our town-committed projects at this point have STIP funds related to them. So McCrimmon and Mooresville Carpenter are in this list because they also have federal or state funds.
Federal, state funds, okay.
And one thing that I did ask really hard to do is on the draft plan, the people, they have some committed projects or that was committed, some were just proposed. I've asked to show, to know, I'm sure they're as committed or proposed, just put them in as if they're roads and then, you know, go through and then, as one of the action items that we need to track, the committed projects, and if they actually, if something happens to the funding, go back and modify the plan to change it to a hashed line instead of a solid line. So we, you know, just making sure, that is one thing that I found was inconsistent among several of the maps. You know, we had committed, which I realize the gym audience, they have no idea what that means, and then you had proposed, and then you had existing basically. So basically change committed to existing, then in footnote that basically says it includes committed projects as well as existing projects. And then one of the things that we're working on too is a glossary that was asked to be added, and I asked to put committed, define that in the term of glossary as well as other terms. We talked about betterments, that was another term, we talked about adding to the glossary. And then again, action items track, you know, every year we have to figure out what has not occurred, and if for some reason something's been removed, it's a committed project, we will then go back and modify the plan and change it to proposed. So hopefully that will help.
So given that, so from the draft one to draft two, what has changed and left? Can you help us? Because, again, going back to this whole, it will help us to...
I wouldn't worry too much about those changes.
So at least for us, so that at least we can... Okay, the changes are coming.
There is a spreadsheet as an attachment that has logged all the comments and the changes, so that will talk about it. But I think some of the real need changes that make it more user-friendly have occurred. Those are going to be in the version...
Is that it?
That will ultimately...
It's clear. I couldn't even read that.
My eyes is perfectly legible.
I don't know what, I don't know what kind it is, but...
When you look at the electronic version, it's...
Okay, all right.
But that also attracts everything that's occurring, it's capture comments from PCB, town council, as well as some other public comments and staff comments. And the consultants have been updating that spreadsheet. So every time you'll see, next time you see a new draft, well, we can give you the updated comment, you know, comment compilation where the consultants go through the board and staff comments and tell, and say how they addressed it or if they just didn't address it.
And so, okay, that comes to, so what about the EPDO? I don't want to take much time, but if you can, the reason I ask all that is, we keep hearing this $250 million that we are, got committed from DOT and all those things, but how do we set ourselves up for that funding and with all these scores of the streets and the funding, how, how do we align ourselves for, to those kind of scoring? So how does that all work? Is, is the crash reports and all these things play into that and the funding play into that? And we can't even get into the great separation because we don't have the money for that. So how do we need money from our, from our STIP? It's basically, those are the kind of...
Are you talking about the 200...
Yeah, the 200.
So those are committed projects, the funding to there. I don't know that there's a lot of town funding to do with those. I mean, it's all state money.
So are they like, then, then basically we take those out, then...
The question is, how are they going to be shown on this plan? So you have, you have, you know...
And that's where Courtney was saying, you know, we'll, we're, we're working with the consultants to, to make sure we can clearly show if something's, you know, committed or, or to be built, and that's where we'll probably show, for the most part, committed projects as existing, sort of let them go into the background so that it really is clear what projects this plan is recommending moving forward.
That's where the point comes down to is, right? Like, 54 is funded, McCrimmon is funded, everything is funded, and for the next 10 years, out of which for the next five, six, seven years, we have funded projects, like, which are like in the near term, which are funded. This is a 10-year plan, right? So for the next seven, eight years, we have funds which are coming for, from DOT, $250 million. So what is that, that we have to really plan for? I'm going to say, yeah, we, we plan all the roads and structures, but we are getting funding, but we are totally depending on DOT. What is that we have to plan from the town stuff?
I think that's what this will identify.
Yeah.
And then what I want to... What we have to do outside of what the currently committed plans are...
Exactly, exactly.
I think it's, the plan will answer your question. It will show, there's a lot more besides...
That's, that's what we're on and how do, how do our CIP, we take those completely out, that state spreadsheet of, of getting junk block out and then look at the filter list so that we know what we had to work out of, then that would be easy to understand and then work out that, that's kind of thing that I'm kind of looking at.
That's where, hopefully with, you know, what we've talked with the consultants about next, the next draft you see, it'll, that'll be a little bit more clear as far as what the, what projects are still recommended to be done outside of those that are already funded.
Or or well, exactly, because everyone says, I agree, you know, like, condition is is the key word everyone talks about, but and other thing I say is everything is funded. But it's funded for the next five years, next 10 years, so what do we do, you know? So we should we wait or is there anything that we can help to push it? So that's that's always sitting in the traffic, you feel the pain, how do we go about that? So and and also, I totally agree with what Michael said, is from 2009 to 2018, like building the roadblock, you know, like the path. What has been done? How do we build the bridge up to move forward, you know, the things that we left out? And what are the other streets that we pick up? That would be very difficult. And coming about this, the studies that we talked about, right, like for Millicent, I'm thinking in the back of my mind, what are you trying to do a study on? Like, are you trying to do a study, kind of a greenway study? Or a roadway study or the feasibility, what kind of feasibility study? What is the study that involves?
And and that we could look at a couple different things. I mean, if, based on the earlier discussions, I would say would probably be, you know, I would say for for something like Millicent, you know, we would, it would be more almost feasibility study. And look at both, you know, get us, give us an idea of cost and and of the road versus greenway. And then also, you know, a big part of that, in my mind, would be going out and speaking to the neighborhood and getting some public input. Both from the neighborhood and then also from other town residents, you know, specific to that, to that project. And then ultimately, that project would come out, and I think this is what the council would want to see. That study would come out at the end with recommendation that the project be a road connection, project be a greenway connection. And this is why, and this is, you know, some expected cost of of building that.
So then coming to, exactly, the reason that I'm asking is, if it's coming to a roadway thing, the neighborhoods are already talking very loud and clear. They don't want a roadway. And the county has very clearly given the idea that they are interested in a roadway. So greenway, you can certainly go do a feasibility, how much a cost and all these things which would concern. So so that's that's a different study that you can certainly do it. But are we, again, we're implementing the ability to go into the roadway again? If that's the case, then we are just doing.
And that's where, I mean, if there's, you know, certainly if there's agreement on on the council. And then ultimately, you know, with the planning zoning board or when it comes back to council, if there's agreement that Millicent will only ever be a greenway connection, we can just put that in the plan, put it in as a greenway connection and be done with it. And there's probably not really much of a study that needs to be done. It just wouldn't, would need to be designed and and constructed. So that, you know, that is something that could be done. But previous, you know, earlier tonight, there was some discussion about whether, you know, do we want? There was, I think, some of the council members were questioning whether they wanted to go on and make that decision now or would rather recommend a future further study.
A further study for a greenway, the cost, that's totally fine, the cost of it. But to go back and discuss, you need a roadway, I think the community has very clearly said its intent of they don't want a roadway. So going again and like asking the neighborhood and asking this one, I think you have the public input and you have every resource. That's where I was, I wanted to be very clear on that point.
Not supportive, you know, I don't want to just be that, but that we need to be able to have the decision.
Absolutely, and absolutely, that's what I wanted to be.
We also want to make sure that the community's especially informed.
Absolutely.
With what a study may tell you. So I think that's what Ben is trying to say. You're talking about spinning the wheels, it's just part of a process to get to where council's making that decision with that valuable community input.
And 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 that's where, so the the input is more for a greenway or discovering a roadway again?
Well, I think what Ben's saying is, we'll have to define the study based on what council wants us to ask.
Okay, I got it, so that's good. And the other thing I wanted to ask is about, like, which I think should, you should be getting an email. And also an email to Scott Wheeler is, a study has already been done for Parkside Valley and Davis Drive as part of the public request which was done for E50. And AA Palm has done the TI peer review. So they have done a complete analysis for the intersection. So one good thing is, needs to be done, which helps the town. Is, they came up with a recommendation of having a view left. And without changing, they looked at your comments and the DOT comments. So they are working with the DOT to see, they're, all they're recommending is to restriping the Parkside Valley and doing some signal changes instead of completely doing the entire thing. Their consultants are ready to hear, sit down with you and Scott Wheeler and do that.
Well, and ultimately with Parkside Valley being a a town road, and I'll defer to Martha here, but with that being a town road, that's probably something ultimately the council would, I, the council will have to probably agree to that because there will be town funds involved.
Yeah, because the the reason.
Modifying the signal and the striping on the road.
The the, what they are basically coming back is saying, they, the MTSA studies have not been properly looked at. And that's where the studies are both were not done. Yeah, and that's that's where, like they said, they are in fact telling the school and DOT to do that instead of the town. So that's where the the report should be going in so that they can work. And instead of the town, they picked it up. So that's that's the other thing. And I heard from the PNC, I was, there was a recommendation of taking Green Drive off the 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 road, right? Connectors.
There was, the planning's board had some discussion of it, and of course, we did have a member of the public attend the meeting and comment on it, and I think she also submitted a petition.
She did.
To the board. So yes, that's that's another one that's been, you know, that's had some public comment on it.
Okay, alright.
But again, you know, we're, at this point, we're not necessarily doing anything with those connectors without, you know, without a, at this point, we're not, we're not doing anything on the connectors until we get either the planning zoning board's recommendation to do it or ultimately when it comes back to council and the council says, you know, change this or remove this or whatnot.
Okay, and about the Redwood and Lewis Stevens, the walkways? Can the study be done on that one too? Because a lot of people who walk a small sidewalk to be added into, because it's just hardly like 200 feet. And there's so much foot traffic, they walk on this. The Lewis Stevens eventually being like a full bay, like, you know, like 2018, the amount of traffic increases. And that will cause, I'm I'm thinking it will cause a lot of pedestal fatality.
And in the current draft of the plan that you're, that you have to review, there is a side path shadow along with the Stevens red.
But it's all, it's all throughout, but I'm asking only for from red, just connecting only like 100 feet or 150 feet. Because on the other side of McCrimmon, there's already a intersection that's, there's a sidewalk from the other side. So all they're doing is they're walking on the on the brass. And they're doing 35, 45, and they just try to cross the road. And my worry is they'll just get hit.
That may be something to talk about outside of the transportation plan. It's probably something better brought up at a council meeting, we can get full council direction to staff to go construct that segment or whatnot, or, you know, we do have our sidewalk construction policy and program that we are planning to bring back to you and and with some more work on that.
So that, will that not go into the transportation sidewalk?
That, the transportation plan at this point, we're, we really stayed away from from looking at sidewalks.
Because I do see a sidewalk section.
We we have, we have a.
On page 81.
Multimodal section. And so what we, what we focus the plan on for the pedestrian is is really recommending the larger pedestrian facilities where there's long stretches for it to make the recommendation like a side path, a wide, you know, very wide sidewalk, eight, 10 feet wide. For the small gaps of missing sidewalks, that's where we're handling that really through the sidewalk
construction program where we've already identified the gaps. We are, actually, we have an intern now that's going and GPSing all the sidewalks in town. So after his work is finished, we'll actually have a GIS layer that we'll be able to look up, pull up on a map and we'll be able to see where those gaps are and confirm that the gaps that are in our sidewalk construction program are still gaps on the road. And then we'll be able to bring you back a a construction program and a request of funding and, you know, as we move forward. But that's gonna be outside of the plan, that's, those gaps are just, they're smaller projects. The plan is really trying to focus on the the big major projects that are that are more of a community-wide type recommendation.
And Martha, like, the 300 block of Willingham, will it come into this plan or will it be outside of this? The school, Greenway thing, will it be? What will it go into this? Alright, that's awesome.
Satish, okay, thank you. It's 8:13, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, we'll be back here, let's say, 8:25. Back to session with our work session, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Vicki Schreiber Johnson to take us through her sticky notes.
That's right, we we've got an hour of time limit on my sticky notes. First of all, I'd like to say that I have really appreciated the level of engagement by the public. I have, as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, received a series of emails, phone calls, town council emails. And I read, I think, at least every comment once, maybe twice in this. I attended the planning and zoning board meeting last week. And it is actually exciting to see the level of engagement because this is really something that's going to be looking forward for the town. And I have both near-term and long-term questions for Benjamin, I know he's looking forward to it. So just kind of saying that, I actually this weekend went around the town, not to drop off rectangular items. I drove down Parkside Valley Drive, I went through Crabtree Crossing, I went through some different sections around where the connections were, Airport Boulevard and so forth. I kind of, I'm a visual person, so I needed to see what everybody was talking about again because I hadn't been there in a while. So with that said, I'll start with some easy things and then we'll go into some topics. On page 77, there's a highlight that says that there's an effort of coordinated lights by the town of Cary. And I didn't know if that was Cary only or NC DOT in Cary that we've gotten a grant to coordinate our light system throughout the town?
Yeah, that's a DOT project that's funded, it's our coordinate signal system, or I think DOT terms it citywide signal system slash ITS project. So I'll have to look at that language, but it's the general, so as we've talked about in the past, a lot of our signals are already on Cary's coordinate system. And so the DOT project is to take the lights that are not on Cary's system and do something with them. Whether that's put them on their own system, put them, pull them on Cary system, pull them onto a DOT system, pull the signals out of Cary system onto a DOT system. We don't know exactly what the scope of that project will be yet, and so.
Is that funding either for the town?
At this point, no, it is, it's a funded project by NC DOT. And so we've got to, the next step is meet with DOT and figure out what exactly that project is and what'll be involved.
Yeah. Because I I saw Councilmember, remember, Garamelli, give us a picture of what appeared to be a red and a green light simultaneously looking, although it could have been the sun setting and hitting the lights, making them appear concurrent. But that, this would be very good.
And and on that, it's outside of the plan, really, but on that project, just as a note, there there could potentially be town funding associated with that project some point in the future. But what the first thing we've got to do is meet with DOT and figure out what the scope of the project is. And then we can, we'll be able to start determining if there's, if there's some things that the town may have an option to, you know, to pay for as sort of a betterment of the project or if certain decisions will lead to additional town funds needed in the future. And we'll, of course, be bringing that information back to you once we have a little bit more information from DOT.
Great, because I think there's a lot of value in having that congestion eased by coordination of signals where possible. So the next topic I'd like to talk to you all about is the NC DOT project for the exit at Town Hall Drive and NC 147, that whole area. I think it needs to be studied. My concern with this area is that there are two elementary schools along Town Hall Drive. And although the road is built out, having access to a freeway just down the stretch could cause safety issues, congestion issues. And not only by the schools, but along Morseville Carpenter Road and McCrimmon. If we could study an alternate location like Davis Drive, is that within our purview? Is that within our our boundaries? That would be helpful. Next topic is Airport Boulevard. Airport Boulevard has a connector connector indicated on the plan as well as a flyover. It would be helpful to maybe study the connector for the Airport Boulevard and understand the impact of either a local street or a collector's street. I think it's indicated as a collector, you know?
I believe so, it should be.
Right, because at Twin Lakes, they did build a collector portion of their subdivision to connect to a future roadway. There is housing that would be very close to a collector road and there's impact there. But it would be good to understand the impact overall. Was there a timeline on the flyover for Airport yet, or?
Not at this point, although it is being scored through the spot, through the NC DOT's spot process this time around.
And that will come out when?
That one will come out in about my, March, April timeframe, we'll have a, we'll have the quantitative score on it. And at that point, Campo will begin looking, Campo and DOT will look at, sorry, and put local points.
Any other roads that will affect us?
Yeah, I mean, that and NC 54, the section from Weston Parkway to Perimeter Park Drive. And then also the grade separation at Aviation Parkway, all the, all three of those projects will be scored. That doesn't necessarily mean they'll, they'll be funded, but they'll be at least scored through the system and we'll have some data at that point to look at.
I'm sorry, which one, what was the middle one you said?
54.
Airport.
Grade separation, 54 widening and Aviation Parkway grade separation.
Benjamin, on the, if we as a council did not want to see a grade separation. Benjamin, on the, um, if, if we as a council did not want to see a grade separation at Aviation fifty-four, but did want to see a grade separation Airport, is that, would that help the, the scoring? I mean, it sounds like if we're not splitting it between two of them, we just said, no, let's, let's do the Airport one, which should help us.
Yes, yeah, we could, we could-
That's something, uh, when's that, uh, when should we have that discussion?
Um, so probably March, April timeframe. The, that, the quantitative scores will come out in March, April, and then Campo will have to put the local priority points on those projects, I believe, by the end of June. So we'll have, we'll have a, maybe it'll be a month, but we should have a month or two, um, this spring where, you know, as soon as those scores come out, we can have that discussion, um, and then if we need to, you know, pass a resolution or want to forward on to Campo.
So you're saying it's better to let the Campo process take place, see the scores, and then come back with whatever our recommendation would be?
Yes.
Go ahead, Vicky, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that transition, because I'm exactly going to Morrisville Carpenter Road for my next sticky. So Morrisville Carpenter Road will undergo, um, a road widening project, which is a committed, funded, um, there's a lot of glossary terms I'm sure I'm missing, um, but there is significant impact to the immediate residents and businesses along that roadway, and that six of the access points will be changed from full access to ride-in, ride-out. Those include Church Street, Page Street, Cudrow Lane, the Groves entrance, there's another entrance at Carpenter Park, and that impacts Town Hall Drive. So I'd like to understand how that works. Maybe we've studied it already as part of the design, but I'd like more information because Town Hall Drive seems to be where everything meets. It's the epicenter, if you will, of the road, um, access points. We currently have, and this is where the sticky comes in, a dangerous crosswalk at Savannah. The police department did a wonderful job at trying to do a watch-for-me campaign at the, um, crosswalk along Savannah, and there's also a crosswalk at Grace Park. I've heard of people getting hit, almost being hit, and so forth like that. So it's a matter of, as we expand this road, there, and, and cars are moving through it, how do we make it safe for our, not only pedestrians in crosswalks, but we're expecting to have people cross the road, um, to enter the town center? And, um, they need to have, um, greenway connection as well, so that whole thing needs to be known. This, um, change of how we access this road and this stress on Town Hall Drive, um, probably added to the, um, extension of Town Hall Drive. Right now, it's being called Crabtree Crossing, and we've probably received more comments on that activity than any other, um, uh, recommendation. I drove down Crabtree Crossing this weekend, and I drove down the, um, Morrisville Parkway to the end of this stub, and it occurred to me that the design of that road is very different from one side to the other. It's really, um, similar to Parkside Valley on the Crabtree Crossing side with Preston. It's beautiful. It's tree-lined. It has bike trails. It has neighborhoods. It has golf carts. But on the other side, it is a straight road with, um, peeling off to, um, multi-family homes. And why did we name, or could we rename, that stretch which is not like Crabtree Crossing, Preston, to a different name like Town Hall Drive? Because it is most similar to Town Hall Drive.
Um, we, I mean, we certainly could, uh, the one thing we'd have to look at is, um, if there's any, any buildings that are currently addressed off of that section of Crabtree Crossing Parkway. Um, if there are, then there's a process we'd have to go through with the postal service as well as E nine-one-one addressing and everything else. If it's just, um, if there are no addresses off of it and it's just renaming that section of the road, I believe that may be a little bit simpler, but that's something we would have to look into. Um, and that certainly is something we could, you know, the, we could look into, whether it be, you know, we include that as an action plan item in the plan, or whether we just do that outside of the plan. Um, we certainly could look into that, but I don't, I'm not exactly sure what would it be, um, what all would be entailed in changing the road name.
So it's a rather novel approach, I admit, but I think it would help all of us understand what exactly we're talking about. We're not trying to change the character of Crabtree Crossing. We're trying to allow for more movement for this stress point of Town Hall Drive. Now with that, the intersection does need to be studied at Crabtree Crossing and Morrisville Parkway because there is a lot of options potentially that could help the residents keep their, um, look and feel of their neighborhood without having cross-traffic, as well as the people that need to get to the Morrisville Aquatic Center and, um, other amenities for the town. There could be a win-win, but we have to understand it and we have to study it. So that would be my recommendation there. What is, anybody else have any opinion about a different road name for that stretch?
I would just say, I, I would, um, well, you may want to call it something else besides Crabtree Crossing Parkway. I, I think, uh, assuming there's gonna be a connection to Town Hall Drive is an assumption that maybe we don't want to do right now.
Right.
So I would, I would, uh, I don't care about renaming it, but to rename a Town Hall Drive, I think, is, assuming then, you're gonna have a connection.
Right.
And if it's not gonna be connected, then I would be-
I'd rather not characterize it as Crabtree Crossing, because I think it's-
That's fine. I, I, I wouldn't want to call it Town Hall Drive if it's not gonna be connected to Town Hall Drive. There's no Town Hall on it if it's not connected.
Right, but it's a proposed connection right now. That's why I'm suggesting that name. But if that's something that you feel we need to hold off on a name, but look into the possibility of renaming it because it is not like the other side.
I would just say it's probably, I don't know, I don't, I don't feel like that's a huge priority. I understand that there might be some benefit to that in the future, and we could-
It, it helps the dialogue. I have lived on Morrisville Carpenter Road, which, if you hit the railroad tracks, becomes Aviation almost immediately, and it is confusing, but at least we know where it, the road is.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't have a problem with having the two names on the same stretch. I think it helps people identify where things are. Um, okay, Green Drive Extension. I think we've had comments about potentially removing that at the request of the neighborhood with a petition. I think that would be important to understand that impact in the future. Are we missing something that is not obvious to the residents, just so they're informed? Yeah.
Can I address that real quick?
Sure, sure, sure.
So, um, just, and specifically on that one, and I mean, the same goes for really for, um, the Mellicent Drive Connection too. Those very small connectors like that, um, and, and I think we, we-
With the planning thing, more than I think I mentioned it with council at the last work session, there's really not, there, there's no data. Um, you know, they're, they're, they're really too small to like trigger anything from the regional model. Um, they, you know, they shouldn't be commuter routes. They shouldn't be cut-through routes, although, you know, they certainly potentially could be, but, um, that's what we've said in the past for, you know, for those very small type connectors. It really is, um, much more of a, and, and I mean, really for all the connectors, it's, it, it goes to much more of a policy-level discussion about, you know, and, and, uh, almost a philosophy, um, philosophical discussion with council as far as, you know, do you want connectivity or not. There, there, there's arguments for and against them.
You're talking about?
Green Drive.
Green Drive, okay, alright.
And for Green and Clements in particular, I mean, that is a very small connection. And I mean, I, I know from the, from the data side, there's really not much more we can give you on the data side without, I mean, we could go out there and do a, you know, follow-up study and, and take traffic counts and show you that, you know, there's twenty cars that drive on Clements Drive and twenty cars that drive on Cl- Green Drive, and if you connected them, you may have forty cars driving on both streets all the time, so. Um, but outside of that, there's not a whole lot more we can give you. It's more of a, at this point, a, you know, policy-level discussion about connectivity.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about that, or?
That was really the only thing I was gonna talk about was the Green Drive situation.
Okay, well, I think we've hit it three times already.
Yeah.
Okay, and the last thing I, well, no, I won't say that. Um, on page forty-one and page ninety-eight, we refer to the Crabtree Crossing, um, road, which in this case is that, uh, extension. And I'm curious because it, it says collector. It's collector on the side of Morrisville Parkway to Cary Parkway, but do we need a collector road from Town Hall Drive to Morrisville Parkway? Is it possible to consider a local road, or is this one of these cases where you say it needs connection, and then you study it, and then you make a recommendation?
So, so I know there's been some questions about the, about the terminology. And, and I know there's been some, I think, confusion between connector, collector, local, whatnot. So the connector terminology purely comes from where we put it in the plan as a, as a connector to areas of town.
It doesn't have any, you know, that's not a technical, necessarily technical term or anything. It's just, that's how we described it. That's the section that we sort of created to describe that and Mellicent and Clements and Green Drive, and the connection from one forty-seven to, um, the Shiloh, um, Town Hall Neighborhood. So it's, that's where that connector came from. Now, collector and local and then, you know, moving up to thoroughfare and everything, those are, that's a hierarchy, and that is, that has a little bit more, um, background and, and technical jargon. So, um, with Crabtree Crossing Parkway, so with, with collectors, and there, there's some discussion about it in the plan, but generally speaking, collector roads, um, generally would have fewer driveways, although we do have, um, and Cary does a really good, I mean, I will say Cary in their plan has done a little bit, has done a pretty good job in this. They actually have multiple levels of collectors. We did not feel the need to go to that level. Um, but generally, the collect, the street hierarchy-
So collector, local, it, it deals with more of what the function of the road is, so what it's doing. So between Morrisville Parkway and Cary Parkway, even while there are driveways on, on, along that stretch, the primary function of that stretch is to collect all the traffic from the present neighborhood that comes off of it and take it either to Morrisville Parkway or Cary Parkway, both of which are thoroughfares. And so that's, generally speaking, the, the function of collectors is to collect traffic from neighborhood streets and get them to a larger thoroughfare. And so if you think about it as almost a pyramid, you have the local streets, which is, you know, your neighborhood street where you live, and then you take that out to a collector that, that collects traffic from several other neighborhoods, and it funnels you all into a thoroughfare, which then is more of a regional type road. And so, um, we certainly could term Crabtree Crossing Parkway a local road, but its function would still be more of a collector road because it would be collecting traffic from north of Morrisville Carpenter and south of Morrisville Parkway and moving it to either Morrisville Carpenter Road, which is thoroughfare, or Morrisville Parkway, which is the thoroughfare.
And so within that functional classification, you can still, that, that functional classification, you can still design it, though, as a local road and have it still be termed collector. And we have examples of that. Um, Downing Glen is a collector road. Um, it's technically a collector. Lake Grove Boulevard is technically a collector road. Church Street is a collector road. So those are all roads that are really designed as, and, and from those living on them, they view them more as a, you know, local street. It's the street they live on, but their function is to collect all the traffic from that neighborhood and get them out to one or two points that ultimately will get them to larger roads and get people where they want to go.
That's helpful.
So what's, uh, so, so right now, you're saying the Church, uh, Crabtree is a collector road?
That's a functional classification of it.
And, and what is the, uh, do you have studies to prove how much more traffic it can take?
Um, no, we don't have studies. I mean, generally speaking, there is some, um, generally accepted guidelines as far as two-lane roads can hold this much traffic, four-lane roads can hold this much traffic. Um, I think it, uh, one of the ones I've heard of the most has come out of Florida, I think. Uh, Florida DOT is one that maybe is used the most, but, um, so generally speaking, what they've said is a two-lane road can hold up to about twenty cars, twenty thousand cars a day. A four-lane road can hold up to about forty thousand cars a day. That's sort of the standard DOT looks at, too. So for example, from, um, NC fifty-four, when we were going through the NC fifty-four Moore study, that's why we had to redo the, the modeling, or the forecast, um, because the first forecast they did said, oh, this section of fifty-four is gonna have fifty-five thousand cars a day. And that, by that methodology, kicked it into the six lanes. We said, well, can you redo that forecast? We don't think it will have that many cars today. They redid the forecast with updated model, and sure enough, the updated model said, oh, it may only have thirty-eight thousand, which kept it to that four lanes.
So, so then, um, let me take one more step, like, will that consider having nine, like, eight speed bumps and then having, um, twenty-five, uh, thirty-five speed limit into consideration, uh, going through high residential? Will that consider all those factors? How, because you're taking a Florida model of, like, this one, and then trying to put it into a res, high residential with all the bumps and the local thing? How, how does all that?
Well, and again, and, and the thing you need to, when we talk about, especially get into roadway capacity stuff, it's all very high level, and it's all very generalized. So, you know, that's why, you know, generally speaking, but, I mean, as we've seen on Morrisville Carpenter Road, it is, it's closing in on that twenty thousand cars a day, uh, number, and there's times that, of the day when you can't hardly move down it. So obviously, it is, you know, it seems, at times of day, it's above, it's ader above capacity. So, I mean, those are very generalized. And certainly, the more you do with design, um, with traffic calming, with speed limits, that, you know, that does take the capacity of a road down. Um, Jonathan, I'll go to your expertise as far as if there's any specific studies out there that, that discuss it, but I mean, I know generally speaking, you can, you know, you can artificially lower capacity, so to speak, by using design.
Yeah, that's right. And I think we're getting, we're starting to get to the point of why it's important to study that by a level of detail of what this plan allows for some of these key-
Yeah, and that, and that also, like, uh, like Parkside Valley, uh, is one where you're getting a school. You're getting, it's a collector road. It's, and you're getting a school and other things. So how do you, you know, define with a thirty-five and a speed bumps and all those things? So, so kind of trying to understand, you take a model of how many cars you're allowed in a collector model, and then you, you put the speed bumps, and you have, uh, bike lanes on either side, and then you have Davis on one end, and then you're getting Lewis Stevens, which is forty-five eventually, that, that four lane. And then in high residential, you're, you're, you know, putting the traffic, and then through a school lane and, you know, fifteen hundred homes. Then how do you work those kind of, uh, data into those kind of pack?
Right, so, you know, there's a difference between macro, which is the regional travel in the model, and, and micro simulation. And the micro simulation is where you're gonna take into account purpose, as it stands, uh, like with, you know, travel in the model, including that for, for its purposes, but it just doesn't have, kind of like, you can work there. It is gonna have that, uh, so you can kind of drop in the, in macro to the micro simulation.
Exactly.
To study that. And then a lot of the, you know, the benefit of the micro simulation also is you're able to input, um, using, you know, raw data.
Synchrofiles, I'm like, you don't have to go to that.
So it's taken into account, you know, for use at-
Yeah, so one of the, other ways that we've, you know, talked- Yeah, so one of the, other ways that we've, you know, talked about it too is that for the, the regional model that we use, I mean, it's, it, it works, but it's a regional model. And it's like, it's at a, you know, thirty thousand foot level. And it's just saying, if you have two lanes, if you have a road with two lanes here and you have, you know, and the traffic patterns are such, this many cars will go on it. At a two-lane road, it should be able to hold twenty thousand. It looks like only eighteen thousand are going on it, so your approach capacity, you're okay. But that's where, that's where we, we continue to go back to needing some additional studies and getting into those micro simulations where we can, there's a lot of software out there now that it doesn't work on a big level, on a big scale, but looking at a specific road connection, we can run these simulations where we can put in inputs and outputs and it'll tell us, okay, you know, if you do, if you do X, Y, and Z, this many cars will want to drive on it. If you do, if you do A, B, C, this many cars will want to drive on it. And then, and then we can also use that to, to figure out, okay, well, we changed this intersection, but not that intersection. So that's where, that's where we keep going back to. This plan gives us a, a, over, gives us a, a high-level guide, but then there's still a lot of additional study and, and really getting into the weeds that we would need to do before we would ever, you know, really constructing most anything in the study. But we just, we can't really get to that level without taking a lot more time and spending a lot more money on the plan document. The plan is just sort of setting a roadmap, so to speak.
So, one of the, um, Cary expansions that I think packed this whole area is extending Morseville Parkway to five forty. And I don't know the timeline of that, but if we do nothing, and Cary does have that five forty connection, I think there will be an impact on this whole stretch of road. If we do something and Cary does the five forty, it will also have an impact. So is, um, our road network doesn't end at our town borders, as you know, and I know you, this is your stu- thing, but it's like, I think about that connection as having, um, some influence on, uh, the study that we might be conducting.
Yeah, and then, and certainly we would want to take in, take that type of information into account. You know, I will say generally, and, and we run into this, um, with TIA's, which are more micro studies, at a certain, at a certain point, you get so far away that the, just the sheer numbers and, and the, and the, um, everything gets diluted.
Right.
And so, I mean, while a connection from Morseville Parkway out to five forty, you know, on the big, on the grand scale, could potentially drive more traffic through more, through Morseville at more granular scale, looking at specific intersections. If they're five miles away from it, that impact's probably gonna be tremendously diluted.
Right.
Because it is so far away and, and there's so many other factors.
Right, well, I, I'm trying to think, like, the one forty-seven connection, the five forty connection, all these, you know, do influence people's behavior and their choices, so. And then, um, this is something you do not have to answer at this point. But in the plan, page fifteen, it talks about a three oh three D, D impaired stream. I wanted to understand what that classification is. Yes, so it's a, like a EPA classification, so.
Yeah, three oh three D, I mean, and we can give more information. We'll work that into the, um, certainly look for things like that to add into the glossary. But that, generally speaking, that's an environmental designation and it, it deals with the, um, it is a, I think it's an EPA designation of, you know, essentially the stream can't with, can't withhold certain amount of life.
Okay.
So it, but it's, it deals with the amount of pollution and, and runoff and everything, so.
And so with our strong, um, stormwater program, does that influence those kind of classifications? Is it ever reviewed again? We've been working really hard on stormwater.
I, I'm looking.
Water back is not my birthday, so. So I have to say, you know, it'd be helpful to understand the classification. And also, you know, since we do have a nice stormwater program, does that ever influence the classification or is it once and done?
And I, I will say, yeah, I don't believe it's possible. I'm not certain on that.
Very good.
Um, and one quick thing, I just wanted to go back to, um, your earlier points about Morseville Carpenter Road. With that, with the, the Morseville Carpenter Road widening project being funded and underway, I know, and I, I've seen the public comments, you know, coming in about the access, um, changes along Morseville Carpenter. That's, that's another one that is more micro situations. It's probably outside the plan. Plus, we very well, the road may be under construction, although it hasn't been even adopted.
I completely see that.
So those are, um, that's something that, that we probably need to address outside of the plan and sooner rather than later. Um, I think Mike Wright is working on, um, some additional information to get out to the public. Um, a lot of that information was shown, um, a couple of years ago. We did have a couple of, um, advertised public meetings about it. We even sent postcards out to people within a certain distance of the road. So there has been public notification efforts and, and to, to let people know about the road project and what it's gonna be changing. That doesn't mean that we couldn't have always done more and can't still do more, um, but that's something that I believe Mike is working on.
So the next layer of information are the stakeholders are not just the people that live along the road, but the HOAs that use the roads. So all the HOAs, if they were notified, they would take responsibility, obviously, for notifying their neighbors. But I know the town is most sensitive to the, the neighboring homes, but people live within, you know.
Yeah, I'll have to defer, we'll have to check with Mike and it, I know, I think Rich may have been managing the project, um, when this was done. But we did, the DOT standard is to notify within, like, five hundred or a thousand feet. So, I mean, we did.
Very, very small.
Small, but at the same time, it usually captures more than just the houses that directly above. And it should, if HOA's own property along, even the, above the road or, or within that distance, it would capture those, so.
Okay, that's interesting.
So the, you know, the, a lot of HOAs probably should have that notification.
Might go out to their property managers, yeah.
And so, um, you know, that's certainly maybe an issue, but, um, and again, but again, we'll, I know Mike's working with, um, Sarah and Stephanie on some additional outreach.
So, so the, the timing of the Morseville Carpenter Road project might impact the timing of your study for this, um, extension. Because we're gonna know more about the behavior of the drivers, about the options they're taking, about the congestion points, once that road is finished.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, that's my hesitation. It's like, I'd love for you to do a study tomorrow, but maybe it's not the right time. The right time would be after we have that final state for the road itself.
And that's actually one thing that we've, um, talked about on the staff level and have talked about with the consultants, um, for an action step. Um, and particularly for, for the Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension Connector is, you know, if that were to stay in the plan, an action step would be, you know, that nothing would be done on that project until we do a study and then looking at best timing for that study. One of the big unknowns with that, especially with that connection, is the one forty-seven project. And so what we currently looked at and are talking to our consultants about adding into the next draft for the implementation plan would be, nothing would be done on that road until one forty-seven is at least designed. And we have more information about what the impacts of one forty-seven extension would be. And then we could, we would do the study and it's, and be able to get a better idea of what one forty-seven impacts would be and then can move forward from there and determine what, if anything, needs, you know, if it's gonna be ti-, if it's time at that point to look at building the road or if it's timed to, or if it's still, you know, push it off further or what. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to do anything with that particular road connection. More information about what the impacts of one forty-seven extension would be.
So that's great. That's a matter of sequencing and getting more information so that we make the right decisions. That's all my sticky notes, Mayor.
Wow, you got through those quickly. I just had, uh, two, two things, one quick, probably one not so quick. But on the quicker one, the Green, Green Drive, um, you know, a couple of people have mentioned that, but I, you know, so hopefully council can, uh, talk about that a little bit more and come to a decision if it's on or off. But I think, uh, my biggest concern with that one is just the amount of traffic on Aviation that would be tempted to go through those neighborhoods in order to get over to NC fifty-four, avoiding the light at Aviation and fifty-four. Uh, so that's, that would be my probably number one concern about that connection would be just the, uh, cut-through traffic of people trying to avoid, uh, queuing up at that light and going through the residential neighborhoods that aren't particularly designed, uh, for that level of traffic, so. And I think that's, uh, was that, uh, other, you mentioned it.
With Mike, I mean, we're building a road. It's called McCrimmon Extension.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't they take that, right? So it's like, with this, what value?
You know, it's the twenty cars in the area, right?
So, yeah.
And then on the, the other subject, maybe, I don't know if it'll be longer conversation or not, but on the Crabtree Crossing, if, um, if, if the decision is to, uh, kind of delay any formal decision until we get the NC, or the one forty-seven discussion figured out, um, you know, I, I think we have to seriously consider, uh, keeping it according to the two thousand nine plan until something else changes to compel us to want to study it or do something else with it. Uh, I don't know why we would go from a two thousand nine plan, which has it taken off to Greenway on there, to something else temporarily pending another study down the road.
My concern about removing it is that we are.
Well, it's already, it's already removed. It's not there right now. We, the two thousand nine plan, which is in effect today, it doesn't, it's a Greenway connection. So I'm not sure why we would get, uh, that's to me the default, until something else compels us to do something else with it. And right now we.
Had a lot of public comment about the need for connectivity. I think it should stay on there until we have more information. I don't, I don't think the two thousand nine is a good baseline.
Well, that's what it, I mean, that's, that's our plan today. That, that is our baseline and for, um, you know, it, it got on there through, I was told, the consultants added it to it, not through necessarily.
There was public comment. It was.
I've asked for it many times, I've never received, so.
If you look in Appendix C, the public engagement summary, there is, and, and we're, we're working with consultants to get some better readability, but, um, they did provide some of the maps that were, um, that were at the, uh, public. Open houses where people had actually drew on the map. Um, and then we also received comments through the Wikimaps portal, um, a, at least one. And unfortunately with the Wikimaps portal, the way it was set up, people could see what others had put on there. And so we don't know if there was more than one person using that portal that, that drew the, the connection lines. On the paper maps, I think it, I don't know if it's much clearer there, but we do have, there was some public comment. I can't, I don't know that we'll be able to tell you definitively. There were fifty people that asked for it and, you know, or there were two people that asked for it. But we just, we do have information that it, it did come from the public.
Right, so, so I, I think it's important to know that early, you know, kind of how it got on there. Uh, but that's always been my question, how did it get back on there? And one, one of the, uh, concerns I have is the folks that did not necessarily want it on there had no way of knowing, I mean, in their view, it was taken off, it's a Greenway. Why do I show up at these meetings and draw lines or not draw lines or red X's? There was nothing to give them the heads up that this was gonna be back on, so you better get in here and get, you know, draw on the maps yourself. It wasn't until it got back on that you started hearing, here we go again, two thousand nine all over again, here's a, here's the outcry again from the neighbor, for the same reasons that there were back then. So my concern is that we got into this initial, um, feeling that, oh, there's nothing, but people have wanted it. There was nobody opposed to it. Well, nobody was opposed to it because they didn't think it was gonna be changed. So I think that's, there's a, you know, and then to go from that to have the consultant put it on the thing, and it's draft, 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 it's unproposed, proposed, uh, when the, and I don't want to say it's a quantitative thing, but the vast majority of the comments we've gotten have been against the connection, keeping it the way it was. And yet it stays on there. So why, why does, you know, the comments early on drive it on, the comments to take it off haven't driven it off? And so if you, if you don't want to comment, that's fine, but, and I don't intend to vote on it tonight or, uh, finalize the discussion on tonight, but it's just, um, the evolution of it is concerning to me.
So to, in the back of one degree before I kind of talk to the other. So, Green, if you do decide to take it off, the connection, we need to make sure, as an action plan, I just kind of wanted to put out there for the record, that the town then goes through and abandons. We actually have access strip dedicated to us that connects Clements to Green Drive. So if you are going to go through the process, if you're ready to form a plan, one of the action implementation items, then go through and actually abandon, um, the dedicated, uh, access strip that we have. And then we're gonna have to do a little more digging, because it looks like it may actually own part of the line as well and it's not just an access strip. So there's gonna be a little work associated with that, which is fine, I just want to make sure that gets implemented.
That's the Green Drive.
That's the Green Drive, yeah. As for the other, putting together a fact sheet, I'm just the process in general, how things came with the plan, and not specific to Crabtree Crossing, it's just kind of a general process of how things were added to the plan, not added to the plan, uh, processes, you know, uh, moving forward, um, just general FQs. Through, so I have kind of a general overview, and then we're gonna probably decide two intersections. One's this subject to Mellicent, some of the questions that we've been asked through the portal that need to be answered. And then as well, ask some of the questions that were asked in the portal, Crabtree Crossing. And answer some of those FQ and get those together. Just to kind of answer some of the questions that are out there today, some of the questions that you just asked.
I think it's true.
We'll have that put together.
Could I, um, if it hasn't been asked already, I keep, uh, hearing about a suggestion of some sort of median in Morseville Parkway to, um, you know, keep people from just driving straight through. You know, ma- make them work for their, you know, their commute through that neighborhood if that's what they choose.
No street.
Uh, so, um, with, with that, uh, there was a concern, I got, this was a call I got about, if that were to happen, that the folks living in the Preston brand neighborhood wanting to take a left on Morseville Parkway to go towards Davis, that that would not be allowed as part of this. And, and so I, I, I don't know the design or if it's even been thoroughly thought out of.
No, and, and how that came about is, you know, one, so it showed up, and honestly, staff had no idea it was gonna show up anymore than the rest of it. And I saw it, walking around, one, you know, through the, the house, saw people drawing on the map. I observed it, didn't put much thought into it, because there's also some notes written on some and just kind of made it go on. Um, and then it did show up in the draft plan that the consultant prepared. And we kind of go back a couple of steps, you know, it was like, hey, according to what was coming through the draft plan, and we had a work session with y'all. And that, that work session was a, you know, highlight that this is on here, because I recognized it was a really big change. And the process in general, you know, staff is kind of the facilitator. And the confidence of the plan is some of those policies is really the role of the plan and zoning board. So we were trying to get the draft out there for them to take a look at. Understood that there was a lot of opinions, um, you know, about it popping back up into the plan, if you will. And so we opened the public comment session much earlier, obviously than we intended to. Yeah, because really at that point, it was more kind of vetting it through the plan and zoning board. I, but I realized there was important information out there that needed to be gathered. And there's, you know, two sides to this, you know, extension, if you will. And, you know, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to it, if you will. So how it came back is a weird way to try a new approach. I don't, I'm one hundred percent, it was a little bit different than what we've done in the past. Typically, everything is vetted really through staff. But really, top plans are really, what the role of the plan is, zoning board, we're just kind of the facilitator of the information. So we really wanted to make sure that when we did that to public, it's kind of a lesson learned in some ways, you know. There were some good things that came about, the process of bad things, I don't take ownership of those. But, you know, I, we didn't know it was coming anymore than anybody else. But we definitely let y'all know as soon as we realized it was showing up on the plan. You know, and, and part of it was just as an FYI. You know, and part of it is just as an FYI, you know, and we were planning on getting the information out, ended up taking kind of a different route than we planned, but it's not going to. But just to let you know, we're getting the information together, I heard it, I'll agree that weird, how certain things came about, you know, and kind of lesson learned again on our part, because it was a different approach, didn't get executed as well as we wanted. But we just want to make sure all the facts are out there. And, you know, there's facts for, there's facts against, and then there's also the facts of how does it impact Crabtree, both sides. There's a north impact, there's a southern impact. You know, how does it impact 147, 540, potential, what impact will that have? What are the intersection impacts? And all those need to be answered, and unfortunately, this day and age, we don't have all those answers. We don't have the design of 147.
Do you also not-
So I just want to make sure that we give you all the facts, that you can make the decision, and we will be doing that, and that's what we're doing with the F A Q. We'll get it to y'all, put it out to the citizens, you know, as well. I'll get it on the webpage, just so everybody has the same information.
So do you have any additional information about that median that I described?
It was just an, it was just an option that was tossed out there, instead of just throwing a line on the map and assuming they're pretty much straightforward, what alternatives could be out there, but again, pros and cons. You know, is it a potential benefit that it means that people are going to have to take a, a less traditional route to get into the neighborhood, which hopefully may mitigate people from going into a neighborhood? But then it's also a pain for those who live in the neighborhood that want to go in the neighborhood. You know, it's a, it's a con as well. We're not going to have that level of detail for the plan. It's being flagged as an intersection improvement and potential options. But, you know, the best that I can say is we can give you the pros and cons, we can give you the best information that we have, and at least the decision that this board makes would base up on the information that you have to date.
I, I-
The design, you know, the thing, they're right. If we do a design that prohibits people from going straight, it prohibits people from going straight to both north and south, you know, and we can look into some leftover mechanisms, but it would involve curbs. So again, pros and cons, don't know what the solution is.
That's fine. So if, if someone says that to me, I can say that there's really no, no, there's no design of the intersection yet. So, and I'll, I'll just end up, I mean, so again, my, my concern is that it got on with, you know, this amount of public comment, and yet it's not coming off with 10 times the amount of public comment to take it off. So I'm not, I'm not sure why there's such a low level of, there's a low hurdle to get it on, but to take it off seems to be a much higher level. Unless you were to tell me it's going to be just like the 2009 draft plan until some other study tells us otherwise.
No, I think we're waiting for the planning and zoning board to make their recommendation as to what they want, because again, it's really supposed to be their plan. You know, they come up with some of the policy things, then ultimately y'all make the final decision on it.
Okay.
So we were making some of the basic changes along the way, but if the planning and zoning board recommends that it will be taken off, the plan will come to you, will include, you know, Crabtree Crossing extension.
Okay, and that's fine, and I appreciate everyone's patience with those questions, so I'm, I'm done, so, um, let's-
Just want to add one point, but if you want to go, if you want to go-
Well, no, go ahead. You can make your point, but I want to go around one more time. If anyone has any follow-up questions, then we'll probably wrap it up soon.
No, just, just two points on the Crabtree extension. I mean, I think that, that, that's the thing that I'm curious about, is if we let away to study it more, what would be the benefit of having another plan, number one? I've seen the benefits, I've looked at the benefits of what it would do in terms of providing better connectivity across town, but I think we also have to look at it, the impact it has on the citizens that live there, just because, we've already said it's collecting road, to bring in traffic from out much of the neighborhood, but there's really, we don't have really a kind of way of seeing what potential traffic could come in there. Maybe it wouldn't be a lot, but I think that needs to be studied more, and we talked about that as we, as we weigh this decision. I think, you know, I've explained to people that live there that the benefits of it are providing access from Morrisville Carpenter Road to the other side of town, looking at, you know, first responder time, least time, because that's one question I forgot to ask today, but I'd like to get some data from the fire department, Todd, just what our response times are average and where, where are the recommendations of traffic we can be taking off the roads for our police and fire in the event of any emergency. But at the same time, you know, I think, you know, I haven't made a decision yet, but I, you know, hearing from a lot of these citizens, really it's affected my, you know, looking at, you can look at something on papers and put it back on, but then we, any decision we make, we always look at impact of citizens. I mean, Parkside is an example, but we didn't just take the recommendation of the school board and say, okay, whatever, we, we're still going through the process and listening to the H A and all these people, so I just wanted to just lay that out there.
It won't list some of the benefits. We have a, you know, impact, potential positive impact, and we have potential negative impacts listed. The only, you know, thing, thing that I would say is a potential impact is the town has developed all of the evidence that we do. So if unfortunately this, this right at the end of Crabtree Crossing, that's not a structure that repeats it really for means of that one of the plans, the most preventative process. I mean, that is a hurdle, if you will, you know, and at that point, then maybe you kind of compromise, only put it on the parcel that we don't know, so we can kind of work around it, but then that fills the other slide. And these are again, different ways that you can take a look at it, but that would be, you know, the, the his con is if it wasn't on there on the parcel that we don't know, and then it just developed. It makes it much harder to put back on the plan afterwards, because it's a difficulty in the way. The downside of that is just, you know, it, you know, if I'm being, you know, honest, how it impacts the people on the north side of Crabtree Crossing, and how it impacts the people on the south side of Crabtree Crossing are dramatically different. You know, and, and that, that can be lost throughout this. Say that is how it would impact people, you know, kind of like the little river that runs through the town, you know, north of the river, it's one impact, comes south of the river, another impact. There's almost three different categories here, the people who have zero access now, the people north, who have lonely, and other, and the people south, and it would, you know, honestly, potentially have a big difference. Just based off the numbers that I have, don't really, one, we said what we know, 147 will not do, and doesn't include the 540 extension, big notion.
Would the fact that we don't own that parcel hinder us from completing the greenway, which is-
We have the green extension already, so that's not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, so let's kind of try to wrap things up here, but I'll give everyone a chance if there's any other things that came up that you want to-
Just a couple of things. There was a spot study about a few years back, about 147 going to Davis, so if you would include that and look at it. The same thing when we talked about Crabtree Crossing, there was previous data done, it was well documented in here. I hope you can use that as a basis of, has anything changed or not from that initial data? It include response times? So, I mean, but again, it was just based on a byline average. I would also, I think you updated it now initially when the first briefing came out about Crabtree Crossing, you were estimating it was only going to cost 390, now we're back up to 8.5?
Yeah.
And I think the other thing I'd like to see in the pros and cons, which I don't think came out in the, in the 2009 study, but the reason why it's so expensive, because we're going through wetlands in there.
There-
And, and there is benefits to have an open space and wetlands in there that, you know, from an environmental standpoint, I would love to, I think that's a good incentive. I think that as a greenway, and then, as came out in some recent discussions, you know, you could, we could put some links in there and make it a, kind of like what we're doing with the wetlands on the other side of West End, make it in a natural park, or, you know, education, putting up signs there. And as far as the green road, or the green connection, I think that's, to me, that's, I mean, if development wants to build it, that would be fine, but I didn't, wasn't aware that we do, we have an easement through there. Could we make it a greenway then? Consider that agreement if development's going to build, but I, again, this was one where I think, as Crabtree has shown us, we can flip it from a road to a greenway. And I think, well, down the road, we'll discuss Millicent, but again, excuse me, we're connecting it to a four-lane road, a future four-lane road, which is going to have an awful amount of traffic once that road is built on. That's what frightens that neighborhood, is people use it as a cut through. Thank you.
DJ, any further thoughts?
This has been a good discussion. I don't have any further thoughts right now.
Liz?
I guess a couple of quick thoughts. I, I like very much this idea of identifying some road connections to study further. So Millicent, the Town Hall Drive extension, or Crabtree Crossing extension, whatever we call it, I think, I think those are, are two areas that are worth further study. And I say that not to discount all the input we've received in both of those neighborhoods, because we've received input from the folks up in Breckenridge that live in Millicent, and of course, we receive input from folks in the Preston Grand neighborhood about the Crabtree Crossing extension. I hear those concerns, and I think those are concerns that we need to address. And either we will be able to address them or we won't, and then that will be our decision in, in going for, going further on those, on both of those connections. So again, I like this idea of studying, and I'll, I'll just add this, you know, you all know that I live off of Morrisville Parkway, so I have been deeply concerned about the, and I've stated this before, I've been deeply concerned about the response time to the, to the thousands of people that live up and down Morrisville Parkway. And I, I don't want, I want to make sure that that is at the top of the list of things that we consider when we study even the Millicent Road connection and the Crabtree Crossing connection. I think in the Millicent example, we have that property up in RTP for a future fire station, and I don't know whether that access will improve response time in the Breckenridge neighborhood or not, but that, I'd like to know the answer to that. So that would be important to me in that example. And then the same in Crabtree Crossing, our public response time, our public safety response time down there. And as somebody who's had to call 911 for a medical emergency, I know firsthand what it's like to, to sit there and hear the sirens that are responding from this fire station, hear them come down Morrisville Carpenter, hear them come down Davis Drive, and then have to come over on Morrisville Parkway. Now, in, in my situation, I live close to Davis Drive, so they responded as quick as they could, having to take that route. It really concerns me if that response has to go further down Morrisville Parkway or into Preston Grand, and what that does. In my situation, that 911 call did not end very well. So was it the response time that affected? We'll never know. Quite frankly, I don't think so. But I, I, I am deeply concerned about that, and that is my, my first priority as we have these discussions. So when we talk about, do we somehow protect those connections until a study gives us a better answer? My gut tells me we need to protect those access points in both those cases until further study tells us one way or another. So that, those would be my only concerns that I want to share with everyone today. So you understand where I'm coming from. I hear all the concerns. I hear them, I understand them, I'm incredibly empathetic and appreciate all the comments, and, and I will tell you, all those comments deserve an answer and a response, and I would be the first one to make sure that that happens. But at the same time, I'm, I'm deeply concerned about our response time, clearly not only today, but in 2040, and that's what this plan is supposed to be addressing. So I am, I am trying very hard to keep an open mind and to think about the 2040 Morrisville, not the 2017 Morrisville, because I will tell you, it's going to be very different in 2040, even if we as a town do absolutely nothing, and you know that's not going to happen, we have more development coming. But the pressures around us are, and the growth around us is increasing, and that, as Vicky pointed out, affects us deeply. So those are the only comments I want to share right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are further comments from Steve, Satish?
Yeah. I think, I, I piggyback on what Liz is saying, you know, 911 access is pretty important, but I think when I first came in, Todd gave me a good rundown of the response times and of how much time it took. And I did ask him, you know, because we are growing, we are intertwined with Cary and Morrisville, we share one of the fire stations with Cary, and coming to this particular one, I did ask, I do remember, you know, where is the nearest Cary Fire Station for Preston? You know, because they also don't have a close one, and they use Morrisville to service that side of the town. So, and with, we having, like, doing the study for 911, going into Cary, right? I think we should sit down with them and ask these questions with them, because from my understanding, Preston is around 1,140 homes, out of which 400 is Morrisville, and the rest of them are Cary. And ask them, because the servicing is also part of the Cary, talk to them, where are their servicing coming from? Because it is correct, every second counts, and how, how are they getting their services? It's not, 911 can come from anywhere, because when we had a fire in Breckenridge, or like this one, we got services from Apex, Durham, and Cary. Whichever is the nearest one, they, they come, and they, they service, depending on the kind of fire. But this particular place, especially the Preston area, is, is set up in such a way, they don't get to the closest. Correct me, Todd, I'm saying, but-
You're correct, this, this area, Morrisville, Cary, there's a gap-
Yeah.
In the response time, and of course, with Cary, they're focused, some of us try to keep up with the growth occurring outwardly, that they, the filling this gap is not as high a part as mine. I hate to deny the part of my concern is a gap.
Yeah, so the, the bottom up proof is that on Cary too equally, to tell them that this area is when we have a joint meeting, and I want to bring it up to their attention too, because they also have an equal stake in them to service this particular area, because when I keep on hearing this, where is their fire department? When we four share with, on the Western Cary, like, you know, on the fire station two, on, on West Cary side, they are heavily depending on our side, and the traffic is pretty bad on Morrisville, block orbit, you know, when they don't get the right access out, you know, they're so heavily department, uh, depending on us, why can't, you know, they have some kind of their fire station coming on their end that they can service quickly on our? So that's something to talk on our joint Cary, uh, Marcell, and that's one action item to talk to them. And rest of that thing, people have to talk.
Thank you. Vicky, any more sticky notes?
I don't have any more sticky notes, but I, I do agree with Councilmember Johnson and Garamella that the 911 response time and looking not just at those connections, but just understanding the impact of safety response times in coordination with this plan is important.
All right. Benjamin, any final thoughts?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I want to thank everyone for making the time tonight to come out. We have a meeting next Tuesday night, regular town council meeting, and this will be, continue to be talked about by the P N Z at which meeting, is there-
The next meeting-
The next meeting is their November meeting, which is November 9th.
Okay. All right. No further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned, it's 9:33.